Welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. Can I have the principals lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
All right, pledge of allegiance.
.................................
Excellent, thank you. We have a consent agenda, minutes from November 6th, 2014, and November 12th, 2014, and oath to bills and payroll.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Good. I also made it seconded. Any discussion on those? Here now, call for vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You guys know anything to say? Oh, you're not here. Sorry, our younger members have work-related issues and are not here tonight, so it's just the three old guys. All right, interested citizens.
More experienced guys.
Hardly challenged fellows.
Interested citizens. No interested citizens. We're going to make one skip here before we go to recognition. We're going to have a talk with the band director on the high school band trip who's going to have a request to go to Florida. This is Hillary Bridge.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. So, the time has come for the high school band to make a return trip to Florida. So, we are proposing that we travel again over February vacation of 2016, and we're hoping to gain your approval. I believe there was information given to you. Yep, the packets from the travel agent, the same travel agent that we used for the previous trip. This time around, the package includes a few more things that we didn't have the previous time. So, this time, the package includes meals for everybody, which we didn't have the last time. And it also includes trip insurance for everybody up until the moment that we travel. If we have to cancel for any reason, we can have all our money back. And it also includes a $1,000 scholarship that I can choose to use with any student or divide it up among students if necessary.
Great. Any questions?
Questions?
So, I thought the information about the arrangements were pretty detailed, and I know that one of my children went last time and gave me a very positive report, but could you maybe report on the impact that it's had on the band?
Sure.
And your anticipated impact moving forward?
So, the experience when we went there was actually, I thought it was extremely interesting, too. I was kind of expecting it to be a little bit hard-for-the-course festival sort of thing, but we met with professionals from Disney who gave the kids the experience of recording music as though they were scoring for a film. So, we got to see the film, we learned about click tracks and what professionals do and how short they have to rehearse before they can produce something, and he worked with our students for a long time. So, they also had some experience in smaller groups, where he came around to smaller groups. And we also got to meet with the recording, sound recording engineer, and talk a little bit about how things are recorded there. And that was one day. There was, the next day, we performed in downtown Disney, which was great because the kids performed very well, but it was an interesting experience to be behind the scenes in Disney, and they kind of made us follow all the same rules that they have to follow, so that was interesting as well. And we performed at downtown Disney. And then we had a day and a half where we got to go to all the parks and experience Disney as it was. So, the kids gained a lot about learning about the industry, so to speak, so the more professional world of music and some recording experience as well, which is not something that we generally offer the kids here in Littleton, so it was cool for them to get that perspective, too. Kids gained a sense of camaraderie, they had a great time, everybody was very friendly, it was a very positive trip. I've been on a lot of field trips, and there was very little trouble, very little incidences, the kids got along great, and the band has grown quite a bit, so I'd like to think it's for more reasons than the fact that we traveled to Disney. I think that probably helped, too.
It's a good look.
Yes.
I just have got a lot of feedback from a lot of the students and parents, and it was a great experience for the kids, and I think listening to the kids at the games and the different events that you host, doing great work with the kids.
Thank you.
It's fun to listen to them, not just as the pep band at the games, but in the other venues that you put on as well. I think it's a great opportunity for the kids.
What percentage of the band went last time?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds?
Yep.
Okay. And the third that didn't go, is that just they weren't interested or had other plans for February break? I mean, I would assume that...
That's probably a possibility. I didn't actually poll them about why they didn't go, but I did say that if it's financial, you know, we can work something out, please come see me. So, I don't necessarily think it was a financial reason.
And do you still think that two-thirds is what you're in for?
I'm hoping that we'll have a little more than two-thirds this time around. It was the first time we went last time, too, so I think some people were wanting to, you know, wait back and see what the results would be and what they got out of it.
Obviously, you've been talking about this, so they kind of spent on their radar and stuff like that. How about fundraising? Are you guys contemplating fundraising? I know you did the mattress sale last time.
Yep, we did the mattress sale last time. We are planning to do the mattress sale again in March. We just made $1,000 at Sweets and Sweets, the fundraiser that we had in early November. We did quite well at the mattress sale last year, we made $3,500 in one day, so that was pretty good. If we get close to that, that would be probably around $4,000 we could raise just this year, and then we would also have the following, this next fall, to also raise some more money. Any of that I would use as scholarship money towards kids who can't afford to pay or can't afford to pay the entire price.
Sounds good. I mean, that really is just trying to make it as available as possible as many kids. Obviously, 100% I think is ridiculous, because people, especially for February vacation.
Right.
People are going to have other plans, and that's fine. But if we're, the goal is to, you know, raise it up, you know, raise participation up and let everybody benefit, I think we're on the right track, so it sounds great. You have a motion?
It's written down, all you got to do is read it.
Motion to approve the high school band trip to Orlando, Florida in February 2016 on the basis of the information and presentation by Ms. Bridge.
Second?
I just want to make one comment just for everybody who's watching. We're talking February 2016, which is...
Yes.
All the way around.
It's a year and a half away, yes.
Yeah, so plenty of time to plan for it.
And donate.
And donate.
Absolutely.
I'm sure they'll be active in the community. All right, I have nothing else on that. Anybody else? All right, move the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hillary, thank you so much for going beyond what you need to do in a classroom. It's a lot of extra work, you have a young family, and you're very busy, but our students certainly greatly benefit from the time that you're giving to this cause.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll bounce back up. Recognition.
Thought it was a good time to recognize our fall sports programs. We've had a great season all around. I'm particularly proud of not only our winnings, but our sportsmanship, sportsmanship from both our coaches and players and spectators. And it's really, as a district and a superintendent, it's something that I value as part of our district. We're very pleased and very proud. So, we have an upcoming football game this Friday, our football team won districts.
Saturday.
Is it Saturday?
Saturday, the eleventh of April, Doyle Field. Ah. It's 13 Priest Street. It's a little tricky to find on the internet. It's 13 Priest Street in Leominster, Mass.
Excellent.
He's such an F. Just to follow up on your comments, I believe that we had something like 60% of the athletes at the high school, or students at the high school participated in some form of athletic team. We offer a wide variety of sports, we have a broad program, much broader than you would typically think from a small-town high school. We also have terrific programs like the cross-country team, the indoor and the outdoor track team, which lets everybody participate and opens the door for a lot of kids that couldn't make a smaller rostered program, so that's a great thing. I was at a coaches' meeting last night for the winter sports teams, and the athletic director said that as far as he's concerned, he thinks he regard, and now this is someone who is a Littleton alumni, who's played the sports in Littleton, has been the athletic director and coach, so he's been around Littleton athletics for a long time. He's calling this the golden age of Littleton athletics. And he didn't say, he said exactly what you said, Kelly, not because we're winning, which is awesome, but just the kids are great, they're great kids, they're easy to coach, they're good in the building during the day, he doesn't have any discipline problems, they're focused on what they're doing, they want to be good students and athletes, and it's been a terrific experience for him. And for him to think about it like that, you know, with all the winning that's going on, not just with the football program, but all the other sports, for him to really realize and say aloud that, yeah, that's wonderful, but really what it is, is the quality of the kids, and obviously, they're benefiting from the offerings. And I know sometimes it can be stressful to pay for all these things and be that broad, but it definitely has a positive impact on the kids.
And so many of our students take part in a variety of activities in clubs after school, so they're really getting a broad educational experience. It's great. Next, recognition or acknowledgement. We have a number of teachers in our district that, I like using the phrase, are searching for next practice, so to speak, in terms of pedagogy in their classrooms. And we have more and more teachers taking part in what we call mystery hangouts. I had sent you an information page on that last week. And what it is, and I have a short video I'd like to show tonight to emphasize more than what I say, it allows students to connect with other classrooms throughout the globe, depending on the time differences of course, but it really promotes higher learning, problem-solving skills, and geography, and it does it in a manner that's sequential and fun, and it really enhances what we're doing within our various curricula. And it really is, it's very pleasing for me to see how technology is used in a classroom to move learning forward, and it's not used for traditional things that technology are used for, it's there to enhance the curriculum. So, having said that, we have other things that we do sometimes on a weekly basis, where authors will Skype into classrooms, for example. Other people, if they're learning about a geologist, or what a geologist does, or an archaeologist, they have an opportunity to Skype into a particular individual in that field and have conversations. So, it really has, our technology has really enriched our classes. So, this is just a small component of what we're doing. They use mystery hangout, Shaker Lane, and it's just really, it's just fascinating to watch our kids engaged in those kinds of activities. So, I've said enough, the video will complete my story, so to speak, and a very short video, but it really does capture the excitement within a classroom.
It's two minutes long.
In my classroom, I'll grasp onto any technology that can expand the kids' possibilities. Creator, come on up. Learning comes from a teacher that's willing to take a risk and do something new and bring in these powerful tools.
Hi, welcome to Mystery Skype.
One of the key tools we're using right now is Skype to connect with other classrooms. It's so powerful to connect them beyond these four walls.
Are you in the United States?
Mystery Skype's a chance for the kids to connect with other students around the world.
Are you Eastern Mississippi?
No.
It's a challenging game for them, they have to critically think.
It helps the kids understand other cultures and other countries.
Are you in the US?
No, we're not.
Are you somewhere in Mexico?
Yes.
It's a powerful tool to see kids learning from each other. Hey, Mateo, come on over, bring those maps. To see their critical thinking process is far better than any test I can do.
Because of Mr. Bradley, learning seems to be really fun. It's more like a game instead of the teacher telling you, this is what we're going to be doing.
It's a team effort to really win Mystery Skype.
Do the Rocky Mountains run through your state?
No, no.
I mean, really, it takes a team to do anything in life, and it's a chance for them to experience that collaboration.
Are you in Baja California?
No.
You can see those light bulbs going off and just that connection that they're making. How better do you do that than to actually connect with other kids all over the world?
Do you have dry weather?
Yes.
Technology empowers our class to be enabled to learn beyond our four walls. I'm just a passionate educator who wants to make an impact for the kids. I'll take risks to try to expand their learning beyond what they could have ever imagined.
Are you in Mexico City?
Yes, we are.
Gives you a flavor of what's happening. I don't know about you, but I would certainly much rather do that than look at a world map on the wall and have somebody pointing to it with a yardstick, so to speak, so...
You're dating yourself there.
A little bit. I guess I better not mention slide rules.
Right, and when they're poring over the maps themselves and coming up with the right kinds of questions to ask, and it's just...
Oh, exactly, yes.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Can I jump in real quick on the recognition?
Sure.
And maybe just tee up future recognition. There was an exercise that was done at the high school, my son Adam was involved with it, with Danica Johnson, in the statistics class, where the students were required to take some of their, some of their goals and aspirations, what they want to be in life, and use some websites to find out what the starting salary would be for that job, what it would cost to rent an apartment, car insurance, real-life finance. And Adam made some decisions based on that exercise, thinking, you know, I may not do this because every month I'm $1,000 in the red. I may make some changes, which is kind of a good time right now, where he's going to use the colleges and things like that, so it's impacted his life. And I just, my hat's off to Danica for doing an exercise like this. And I'd like to kind of challenge the whole district, really, to look for opportunities to teach kids these life skills and these life, these financial skills, you know, there's a lot of resources in town, we've got a number of banks, for sure.
Yes.
We've got auto dealership, we've got, you know, insurance companies, so maybe there's some exercises that we could do, maybe in collaboration with the Rotary or the Shoah Chamber of Commerce or something, where we could do some sort of collaborative to get the kids thinking about these things, and balance and checkbooks, and, you know, some of the, some of the real-life skills that aren't necessarily...
Like you said, integrate into a curriculum and want more in the classrooms that, you know, runs into the skill sets of the, that they're already grabbing out of the classroom and applying it to more of the real world, and like you said, immediate to them type of situation.
Also, if we were to, you know, throw out a point of contact, you know, if it showed up in the paper or somebody watching here from any of the local businesses, who would point them to at the schools?
Dr. John Harrington, without question.
Could be the principal.
Maybe we should encourage any local businessmen or women business owners to contact the principal if they have something that would be applicable to helping our students with their life after high school.
That's a great point there, I'll appreciate that. And John, if you need help making some connections to the business community, I'd be happy to be that liaison from the school committee to, you know, help facilitate that.
Appreciate that. And just to comment, just briefly, that PTA and I have been discussing some different options with either local credit unions, local banks, some type of partnership. There's a lot of prepackaged curriculum already available for us to use embedded within our existing curriculum.
Yeah, I didn't want to name names, there are a couple of institutions that have had some conversations with me about this, and I appreciate that.
It's a great conversation. John and I have had a number of conversations in the past four years on this topic. We've introduced in some of the high schools I've had before something called COM-20, and it's career and life management skills, and it's exactly what you're talking about, mandated three, mandatory three-credit course for graduation. And it goes through the whole spectrum of life skills that students need as they finish high school and go on to their next journey. But it covers finances, it covers resonability, public speaking, you know, cost of living, it's a great course, so it's certainly easy for me to access, and we just have to figure out whether, as a district, this is something that we really want to promote, and if we are firm believers in it as a 21st-century skill, we can certainly make it happen. There's no certification required to teach the course from the state's point of view, so we could certainly put it in and do it that way, or we can integrate it as well. Sometimes that focus makes a big difference as well, so, good topic.
Again, I don't want to steal the thunder of those that are being recognized tonight, but I just thought it was a good place to jump in there and give Danica a quick shout and also tee up the conversation for future discussion.
Yeah, it's a very important skill.
All right, presentations, already took care of the band, now we have the MCAS presentation.
All right, I'm going to be very brief before I turn it over to the rest of the leadership team this evening. Nice to stand up and change. We've created a presentation for you this evening. Every November, we take the opportunity to talk to the school committee and a larger community via filming or live TV, in this case, about the district's MCAS scores. We've streamlined it, believe it or not, I know it's 55 pages, but what we've tried to do is create tables that are easily read and schematics that kind of stand out at you. We do much more than this as a district. We tease the data down quite a bit more than what you see before you, and I just wanted to make that point. We have data teams, well-established data teams in our schools. They, first of all, start to take a look at data on the basis of proficiency levels of students. Then we tease down into the actual exam itself and do an item analysis, and as Jerry Lynn goes through her section, she'll go into more detail as to how we do that, but it's standardized within our district. For example, if we have a variance within a question, a point variance, we will tag that question, we will match it to the students' answers in the class. There's a variety of things that we do that sets off, I guess what I call, red flags, so that we, the teacher can take a look at their curriculum...
so that we, the teacher can take a look at their curriculum, how they're teaching the material, whether the assessments somehow match the concepts that are being tested on MCAS. You have to remember that MCAS is a test of standards. It's not a test of curriculum. Those are very different things. A curriculum is much more detailed. There are some people that believe that the standards are becoming the curriculum as we move into common core throughout the nation. But it's not a curriculum at this point in time. We use MCAS in a variety of ways. My philosophy as a superintendent, even though it's mandated, if we're going to do something, there has to be some benefit in doing it. MCAS allows us to take a look at yearly data points for students in terms of student progress, administered once a year. We have many more data points that we look at that are equally valuable. And MCAS takes a look at part of what we do, but certainly not all of what we do. A lot of 21st century skill sets, for example, are not measured through MCAS tests. And we have a battery of tests, whether they be our new adaptive test, Northwestern Educational Assessments, that's given us great information about where students are at in math science and ELA. We have teacher-developed tests that we use, so we have a lot of data that we have on students. This was, this is a one-time shot in terms of looking at student progress. But what's nice about this is it's standardized. Standard deviation's about 17%. I wish it was a little less than that, but it's not that bad. But it does give us an opportunity to track students' progress through time, which is important. They've also added student growth scores, acronym SGP's. That is another, another data point that we look at. But the more we look at SGP's, the more we realize that it cannot be looked at in isolation. It needs to be tied into proficiency levels and other factors in terms of curriculum and pedagogy and assessment. When you combine that, you can create a nice picture of what's happening. For example, we, at the school level, and it goes right down to the classroom level, when students are in the need, needs improvement category, we take a look at, at an item analysis for those students, we take a look at growth scores, and then we find out what voids and what strengths that they have. With the Northwestern Educational Assessment, that piggybacks that now, and we actually have a better profile of our students in terms of where their strengths and challenges are. So, we take MCAS scores seriously in the sense that it's one other data point to make sure that our curriculum is aligned, our assessments are aligned, and our teachers are able to critique their own methods of delivery and teaching strategies within the various classrooms. I happen to report to you this evening that in ELA, with all the tests that we give in our various grades, all of our classes were above state average. That also holds true for math. We've intertwined student growth scores with our presentation this evening with the achievement levels. So, looking forward to having the leadership team talk about their schools this evening. And Jerry Lynn is going to talk more at a district level and the trends at the state level. So, with that, I'm going to invite Dr. Jamie Nelson podium to begin the presentation.
The superintendent covered many of my introductory remarks.
Just that my apologies in advance.
Thank you. No, it shows shared thinking. We are pleased to present information at this, you know, yearly time. It's an important presentation regarding the performance of Littleton students on the spring 2014 MCAS test. Approximately 900 students in grades three through 10 were tested in multiple subjects this spring. And as the superintendent indicated, MCAS assesses what students need to know and be able to do as defined in the Massachusetts frameworks. Hence, it's a standards-based test. It tests standards. The goal of MCAS, again, is to measure both the performance of our students against those state standards and also to provide useful feedback that can improve teaching and learning. And in Littleton, we embrace both aspects of this dual goal and are committed to providing information on evenings such as this on MCAS to all stakeholders who share responsibility for improving what our students know and are able to do. And it's from this perspective of commitment to rigorous measures of academic performance that we should view the performance of Littleton students. As the first two slides indicator, we hope the first two slides indicate that the analysis of student performance data is a shared responsibility and it's a priority that includes evenings like this, the communication of those results to parents and community members. And as the superintendent indicated, we've developed protocols and processes for those analyses that are shared throughout the district or are involved throughout the district. This is an overview of the MCAS, 17 different MCAS tests administered in, and I would just like to note that grades four, seven, and 10, the ELA test includes long composition. And you'll see references to writing and reading and the differences between an ELA test and the reading test here. More background information about MCAS tests themselves, the standards, superintendent talked about achievement level, the percentages of students performing at each of the four performance level is something that we look at. And we look at changes between performance levels, students going from warning to needs improvement to reaching proficiency, and then beyond proficiency to the advanced performing, performance level. I also would call people's attention to the fact that there are different types of questions on the MCAS test. And this is something that receives, this is something that receives detailed attention in both the item analyses and decisions regarding and communication regarding curriculum and assessment and the alignment of classroom assessment practices with the demands of the large-scale MCAS assessment. Again, as the superintendent indicated, there are several uses or purposes of MCAS and connecting it to improvement of teaching, teaching and learning. And these are something that you see prevalent within the professional cultures, within each of the schools in Littleton. The item analysis, as I indicated, help to identify strengths and weaknesses and gaps in curriculum instruction and assessment practices. And the overall emphasis, separate from these purposes of MCAS, in Littleton is providing actionable data that's relevant to improve and to target instruction for our students. Every year, I provide a slide or two that sets a statewide context for the MCAS spring administration. And as I've looked at the slides in past years, they have differed. And I think the people at DESE this year were scratching their heads. It was a little difficult to see variation between the 2013 and 2014 MCAS tests statewide. And in fact, with the exception of only two eighth-grade tests, that variance was only one or 2%. Last year, the DESE published five-year trends. This year, the statewide summary moved to eight-year trends, beginning in 2007. And what we saw, there's a big difference between the two subject areas. Student achievement in ELA showed huge gains at grade 10, where you had moved from seven out of 10 students to nine out of 10 students statewide achieving proficiency. But declines at grades three and four and remain flat in other grades, something that is, you'll see mirrored in terms of the early elementary levels, mirrored at the district level. Statewide in math, achievement has grown up to five percentage points in the last eight years in different grade levels, with the least improvement at grades four and seven. The percentages of between-group achievement gap, the achievement gaps between students in the aggregate or students with disability compared to all students statewide, you see that that gap has narrowed in ELA at grade 10, but it has increased or remained unchanged at all other grades in ELA. And in mathematics, the situation is not, has remained unchanged at grade 10 or increased at other grades, even though the aggregate performance statewide in mathematics has gone up. This is a context in which we can take a look at and understand the challenges of moving those, addressing those achievement gaps, whereas Littleton has 900 students and we're taking a look at the test of 500,000 students across statewide. The next slides are something that I think the principals will be addressing. As the superintendent indicated, we do have a slide that shows district-level results compared to statewide results. This is something that we include, this is something that we include every year. It is important to note that in both subjects, in both subjects, district-wide performance is above the statewide performance. The percentage range at the statewide performance ranges from the 50s percentages to the 90s. Where in Littleton, we have the range of seven out of 10 to nine out of 10 students achieving This year, in response to changes in presentations to the school committee and discussions within our, at the school level, we have focused more and more on the growth model as part of MCAS achievement performance data. And so, therefore, we wanted to provide a number of different slides to explain that growth model. The growth model itself answers different questions and involves different comparisons than what we have set forth for you before in looking at MCAS achievement data alone. The MCAS listed by performance level shows how a student is doing relative to the state standards as they are presented at each grade level. The growth measures change for an individual student over time. It shows academic, it answers the question, how much academic progress did a student make in one year as measured by MCAS compared to, and you'll hear this phrase, academic peers. And academic peers are defined as students with similar MCAS score histories. So, I wanted to give the school committee and parents at home a little bit of grounding in what the growth model is, because this is something that is, has become an integral part of our presentation. In terms of why the growth model has been incorporated into MCAS presentations statewide, while the measurement of student achievement vis-à-vis the grade-level framework status, standards gives us important information, measuring growth adds another dimension. It offers a broader, more nuanced, more complete view of student performance. It provides, most importantly, percentiles to measure progress regarding, regardless of where students are on the MCAS performance level. So, it can show progress that students make at the warning level, needs improvement, proficient or achievement. And it provides evidence of improvement, for example, with students with low achievement, and it shows evidence of improvement with students with high achievement. And it gives high-achieving students and schools something to strive for beyond proficiency. When growth is set forth, it's set for that rate of change is expressed in percentiles. And those percentiles are divided into growth bands of 20% each. So, you have five different growth ranges from very low to high. And when the principals are discussing high or very high ranges of growth, these are the percentile, the 20 percentile bands, five different bands that they are referring Now, for example, I talked about how growth can be measured, whether a student is performing at any achievement level. You see three different students here and their score histories from grade five, six, and seven. And each of those students' growth can be charted to where they achieved in grade seven. So, someone performing at a very low level, for example, Ivy, could make, could have a high level of growth even though her achievement may not have reached up beyond proficient, but yet she has grown very much. And you'd want, you'd want to see this, demonstrate that for all three students. The typical range of growth for students is 40 to 60%. So, it is expected that, you know, within every year, the grade-level standards get harder. So, you move from fifth to sixth to seventh, and if your scores go up just a little, you are making moderate or typical growth because the standards themselves are harder every year, their grade-level standards. Okay. I've included a number of images on data and data analyses. And the images and the quotes that we've included here are meant to reflect what's happening in Littleton, and that is our commitment to making data actionable and relevant. It shows that we use multiple data boards to get a more complete picture of student achievement, individual student achievement and student achievement in the aggregate. And you'll see in our protocols and the reports that we use that there is a dual emphasis on the analysis of individual student performance data, subgroup performance data, and, and performance data for students in the aggregate. The superintendent indicated that we have developed protocols for evaluating MCAS tests and questions and are increasingly utilizing and getting more skilled at using the reports through the DESE Edwin's Analytics in the DESE security portal. This is, these data analysis protocols are used at the elementary and the secondary level and reflect how we parse the MCAS data at each school. Here you have the department-based secondary-level MCAS analyses. What you will see that is emphasized primarily, again, is that this is a shared responsibility. Both faculty and administrative teams are involved in MCAS analysis. The item analyses go question by question in aggregate by subgroup and for individual students. And there's faculty review of MCAS results in terms of a curricular lens by standard to take a look at revision and align... to take a look at revision and alignment of curriculum sequencing. When you look at these slides, and you'll hear more of it, more about it from the, from the principals, taking a look at MCAS question types, how students demonstrate their knowledge on open response compared to multiple choice questions, figures heavily in our analysis, and the comparison of subgroup to the aggregate is an important part of department-based analyses. What you also find increasing is targeted instruction around MCAS practice. So it's not a reductionist teaching to the test, but it's presenting questions to students so that they have practice in the analytical, the analytical thinking that the MCAS questions, especially open response, require. And then finally, as the superintendent indicated, we made reference to the MAP assessments and alignment of the MAP assessment results and data to MCAS. And that is probably one of the new lenses in data analysis that we did not include last year because we had not implemented the MAP test as of this time. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Principal Buzidlo.
Mike?
Unless you have any questions on this segment, either myself or the superintendent. Any questions?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we do questions for each presenter? You know, yeah, definitely.
This is the long presentation also.
Yeah, and yeah, a lot of stuff might be specific to building and stuff, so.
Yeah, so I had, I had three here. On, on chart six, you actually, I think you said it, you said it has DESE scratching their head there. Has there been any analysis on, on why the dips in grades four and seven at the state level? And I see it in the, in our scores too, and I'll probably ask that same question locally, but.
No, but it, I just was quoting from the summary. I know when statewide, when there are reports about state initiatives and state priorities, for, for a long time, you would hear at the state level an emphasis on the early reader and, and reading at the elementary levels and, and middle school math. And those were in response to those district level, state level summaries.
One of the reasons, if I can jump in for just one second, one of the reasons I think you see the dip in ELA at those grade levels is because it's the long composition is woven in, so it's not just a reading test there, it's a writing test as well at those two grade levels. So on the ELA side, I think you see a dip because of the additional.
It's not the same test. Grade four is not the same test.
And so we see a significant dip with the writing coming in there. And statistically, two or three, might be four years ago now, the state came out and just indicated that the fourth grade test was one of the most difficult in the battery. And so we see that dip statewide, and we certainly, as you indicated, see it locally as well.
I think, Darrell, what, what you're seeing here is from, from the department level, they're, they're looking at, at the tests and trying to ascertain whether they're a cognitive match or not. And I love those conversations personally because who's establishing the benchmark for cognitive appropriateness at each grade level? And we all know that we're, we're increasing rigor, but there's an upper end of how much you can increase rigor before there's a cognitive mismatch, is a simple way, simple way of putting it. So they're, they're taking a look at all that data now and, and trying to, to positively, you know, retool their metrics, so to speak. But I've always, you know, when you look at a standardized test, I've always asked the question, how do you know that these questions are cognitively appropriate? What types of measures have you done? And a lot of it is, is through piloting, test questions. But as they evolve, or as the exam evolves more correctly, they're pushing that upper limit. And I think that could be partly what we're seeing at this point in time. So I know they're working on these things, they just have to, to figure out what they need to do to, to, first of all, determine whether they're cognitively fit. All questions are cognitively aligned is a better word to use. And then they'll, they'll obviously make some recommendations and provide some support from that point on.
Yeah, 'cause I was looking for the state level context there, because before we got into the district level ones, we could be gurrling all night as to what we need to do locally, but if there's a global problem with this thing there, it's not necessarily something we can correct through our own local practices. And I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the statewide perspective on that.
And some of it, Darrell, too, is, is looking at these questions in terms of higher learning and making sure that our, our resources are keeping up to the changes that they're making. And it's, so it's not as simple as they're using a terminology or a diagrammatic representation that our students are unfamiliar with. Sometimes some of those upper end questions are increasing at a rate where our resources may not be increasing at the same rate. So we're looking at that too as a, as a district, as we do a, a test analysis, which includes the item analysis, to ensure that, that the resources that our teachers are using in the classroom are hitting those, those areas.
And the other one I had, you also, you mentioned that we're looking at multiple means of measure, the different, you know, assessments and the other pieces. Are we seeing any conflicts in what the results of one assessment says versus the results of another, where we're not quite that far into it yet? Like your NEAP scores saying that we should be doing well.
Well, we're not, first of all, we're not that far into it. There's only been one administration. And we did take a look, we took a look at some of the reports that were part of our last training. Remember, we just had the trainer at the full PD day. And there were, there were some reports that showed projected proficiency, you know, a connection between the NWA MAP score and projected proficiency on MCAS. And from an initial cursory overview, a number of us that took a look at it felt that the projected proficiencies, they projected more students being proficient than, than we had at, at this point. And what was important to note is that there's only one type of question on the MAP assessments. It's, it's the multiple choice. You don't have the short answer, you don't have the open response. And that this, you see that theme throughout our item analysis and also our targeted instruction and remediation, and that is to prepare students for answering those open response questions because they may have understood the content and be able to answer the question in a multiple choice format, but they, they fall down when it comes to an open response format.
And the NWA test is, is going to give us some, some far better data because we're doing it three times a year, whereas MCAS, it's just once a year. So we're going to have three intervals to take a look at where our students are at, which will help. There is an alignment between, they call it the MAP test and MCAS. And when we're just, as we're getting into NWA a little more, we're, we're crosswalking and seeing the alignment, but it's going to take a bit of time to, to finish that analysis.
And when you had said, if there are any sort of real connections or substantive connections between what's going on in classrooms and results of MCAS test, there is increasing the effective use of prior MCAS tests and questions in terms of error analysis and, and homework informative assessment so that you can bolster student achievement on those open response and short answer questions. So it's not the first time students have to demonstrate their knowledge in that way. So this is, this has been a goal in different teacher teams and different grade levels.
Thank you.
I'm kind of biased, I kind of like to, rather than looking at the mosaic, I like to look at the whole picture.
So you can see if no questions.
At this point, I don't. We won't delegate unless we.
Thanks.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I get the message.
I know.
Just wanted to savor a trip back.
It's okay.
The questions that you asked, tied into the same thing.
Good evening. It's always my honor to come and talk about the outstanding work being done at Russell Street School with teachers and students in the classroom. Tonight is no different. I'd like to introduce Pete DeLaire, who's here tonight. He's our new K to five math and science interventionist. It's great that he's here this evening. He's been doing a lot of work with our teachers. I'll talk about some of his work at the end of my presentation, but I thought it was important that folks knew who he was. So he's been a great addition to our team. Thanks for coming tonight, Pete.
Thanks, Scott.
You'll notice the first part of this slide shows that we remain relatively flat with the percentages of students at Russell Street School who are scoring advanced and proficient across the subject areas. There's a slight drop off this year in ELA, and we picked up a few percentage points in math and science. I put the three years there so that you can go back and see, as of last year, there had been a few percentage points drop off in math and science, and we had picked them back up and a little more in science. Part of why that's interesting and important is our, we remain a level two school because of our high needs population, but our aggregate student population is also a level two population at this point, while we still remain very similar in our proficient and advanced status. The way level one, level two, level three accountability status is calculated is complicated. It includes taking a look at scores in general, and there's a whole lot of acronyms here, but the CPI, that gets translated into a CPI. It takes a look at the growth scores of students, and then you can get bonus points for moving students out of the warning category and moving students into the advanced category. And then after they calculate all of that, they take a look at four years' worth of data and do a mathematical equation. So while we remain relatively flat with how many students are proficient and advanced, our accountability status has slipped a tiny bit. And if you look at the specificity of those numbers, even those numbers have only changed a little, but it is enough that our accountability status has changed a tiny bit. We still remain a level two school, but our subgroups and which groups are in that level two status has changed slightly. As we look at areas of relative strength, we were proud for the second year in a row to have our advanced learners show tremendous growth at Russell Street, tremendous growth scores at Russell Street School. In ELA overall, students in the advanced performance category had growth scores, very high, 78% of students had very high growth scores, and in math, 58% of students had high and very high growth scores, so we're really pleased with how our advanced learners are performing. And again, as you can see, our non-high need students are performing at 84 and 86% in the advanced and proficient categories. So very strong scores there. As we look at areas for consideration, our growth scores overall at the school level dropped from last year, which we found interesting. There weren't any, there wasn't anything we could put our finger on that would cause an overall drop in growth scores. If anything, we tried some new things. We, you know, there wasn't anything that we looked back on and said, you know, we can see why that would have happened. There weren't any major curricular changes or pedagogical changes. You know, we, we tried some new interventions and those types of things, but nothing that we could put our finger on. So that's something we need to keep an eye on, why that may be, but we did see an overall drop. As Dr. Jamien talked about, we do look for growth scores that are at least 40, which is the, the low end of the moderate range. We really like to see 50 and 60 and above, obviously is great. And as we looked at our growth score breakdowns, we noticed, and this was surprising information because we work really hard at Russell Street School, as we do at the, in the rest of the district, to put interventions in place for students who aren't performing the way we'd like them to perform. But our students who are performing not at grade level have growth scores that are not as strong as we would like. So we don't often feel like maybe we've done as much as we could for advanced students, and their growth scores are tremendous, and the students that we're putting interventions in place for don't have growth scores at times that are as high as we'd like. And so we're continuing to look at the interventions that are in place, we're continuing to look at those growth scores. As the superintendent indicated, I don't think there's any reason for panic there, but it is something that we want to keep an eye on and, and keep looking at the interventions that we're using and make sure that we're continuing to fine tune those processes and keep an eye on that trend to see if that continues. Open response questions continue to leave points on the table and continue to be a challenge for students in Littleton as well as across the state. This is, these are ELA scores you're looking at, just as an example. That's, the first column is grade three, the second's grade four, and the third is grade five. It shows you their multiple choice percent corrects at 87, 86, and 79. And that points to the information Dr. Jamien was just speaking about, that we're really very strong when it comes to multiple choice questions. And then the top column shows you the percent of points that students gained in open response questions in ELA. And so that's clearly still an area that we continue to work on. I'll talk more about it in next steps. We worked on it last year, grade levels had goals directly related to open response, and we'll continue to focus there. And achievement gaps continue to be challenging in subgroups, in gender, in those, in all of those areas. And so we need to continue to consider that. The next several charts will show the grade, as they do each year, will show the grade level, both subject areas. It'll show the percentage of students that are proficient or higher, and it'll show their growth percentiles if they have one, and the number of students that were included in that grade level and that were tested in each subject. So this is grade three. You'll note they don't have an SGP because it's the first year that they're tested. And so in reading, 79% of students were proficient or higher, and in math, 82% of students were proficient or higher. We continue the trend of our third grade students scoring very well on MCAS and being our strongest performers again this year. As Darrell alluded to, we see a drop in grade four that, that mirrors the drop at the state level. So we see that drop again, 69% of students in grade four ELA proficient or higher, 63% in math. The number that we're most worried about there at Russell Street School is that 38% SGP in ELA. We're taking a look at that, trying to figure out why we see a drop like that. The 53, you know, we're not as concerned about, but we see a growth score there below 40. And so, you know, fifth grade teachers are certainly working with those grade, those students who were in grade four last year, and we'll be looking at the data and the students who had growth scores that were not as strong as we would hope and, and be taking a close look at that. There's no clear indication as to why that was. Again, no major changes from the year before in, in what was done, but something to be looking at for sure. Grade five, ELA, 73% of students proficient or higher, math 75, and in science 69. You'll remember when I presented last year, that fifth grade math had numbers that we weren't as happy with or as proud of, which was an unusual thing. Much better, we're much happier with the mathematics numbers coming out of grade five math this year, with 75% of students being proficient or higher, with SGP's over 40. And I'll talk a little bit about what we did last year and what we did this year. There's some changes around scheduling, we did some changes last year, some changes this year, and Pete is working with that team again this year, so we expect to see continued growth in fifth grade mathematics. This slide just encapsulates all of Russell Street School. All grades in ELA, 73% proficient or higher, 41.5 SGP. All grades in math, 74% proficient or higher, with a 47 SGP. And all grades in science, 69% proficient or higher. The interesting part of this is we spent a good part of last year trying to make sure that our math curriculum was as, as aligned as possible with the new master's it frameworks that incorporate the Common Core, and teams did a lot of work around that. And so it's interesting to see the growth score stronger in math than ELA. We certainly do a lot of work in ELA as well. We are piloting a new reading and writing program, and it'll be interesting to see in those classrooms where that pilot's taking place if we see stronger growth and stronger proficiency. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that when I get to next steps. These charts are in a little bit of a different format. They're pulled out of Edwin Analytics, but they reflect the same cohort information that you've seen in previous years, so it's the same data given to you in a little bit of a new fashion. This is the current sixth graders, so this represents that their MCAS scores in grade three, four, and five. And basically, it shows what we've seen for a trend for. it shows what we've seen for a trend for some time, the very strong scores in 3rd grade, a dip into 4th grade, and then somewhat of a rebound in 5th grade. This is the current 5th grade, so you don't, you can't see that bump yet. And so you certainly see that dip as they came into their 4th grade scores in ELA. As I mentioned earlier, remember that that includes the long composition writing component. So there's a significant change in the test from 3rd grade to 4th grade in ELA.
And the first time, if I've seen it right?
Yes, thank you. The first time. This is mathematics, current 6th graders. So this shows their 3rd grade, 4th grade, and 5th grade scores. I alluded to this previously. You show that, you see the significant improvement this year for grade 5 math. You see that they moved those student scores coming out of 4th grade pretty significantly. The, the number of students in the advanced or proficient category is significantly higher than they were in 4th grade. You see a group of students in warning there, that red band. That's a group of special education students that fell into warning there. Well, during some work in grade 5 mathematics, special education this year, we did some training with staff, and there's some changes going on with some individual goals around the way we're develop, excuse me, what, the way we're delivering 5th grade mathematics, special education instruction, in the hopes to address that a little bit. That was an interesting trend that we noticed during our data analysis. But otherwise, I thought that was some great data that we saw there in grade 5. These are our current grade 5 students. So we're looking at their grade 3 scores and their grade 4 scores, mathematics. Remembering that we talked about, again, at the state level, that's a similar drop-off that we're seeing at the state level. So as we consider next steps, you'll notice this slide is not significantly different from last year. The categories are the same. Some of these areas are continuations, some of them are new. We've rolled out quite a few new initiatives at Russell Street School since I've gotten here. One of the things that we've talked about, and one of the things that I'll talk about here tonight, is I think it's important that we recognize the great work that's being done, that we give the things that we've put in place some time to work. We see some fluctuation in our MCAS scores, up and down. I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the great things that are being done and that we maintain the morale of the fabulous staff that we have. And so as we look at data, we'll continue our data team model, and we'll continue to look at achievement gaps. And I think MAP, as folks previous to me have alluded, is going to become a really valuable tool for us. We'll be able to see this type of data three times a year and be looking at individual interventions for students, and see how that gives us potentially a more diagnostic view of, of how our MCAS scores are going to come out. I'm hopeful that it is, it gives us a more valid predictor of how our students will score on MCAS. Right now, we do a whole lot of work during the school year, and we're hopeful that our students do better, but we don't always have a great predictor that they're going to do better. So we're hopeful that MAP will, will provide that for us to some degree. We're continuing to address writing. We have rolled out Journeys as a pilot. You've heard us talk about that before. The writing component in Journeys, as well as the reading component, are much more rigorous. They're more aligned to the Common Core. Students are seeing a wider variety of writing expectations. And we'll continue to address open response. There's lots of points left on the table in open response. So if we could get our students to even make small improvements in that area, I think it would help us move potentially that achievement level up. And we've been looking at exemplars, and it's interesting to have the teachers look at the exemplars and see what the state is looking for and what our students are doing when they're answering open response questions. Because they're answering them correctly, they're questions like, you know, they'll read a piece of literature and about dogs and wolves, and the question will be, how are dogs and wolves similar or different? And our students are, to get a, you know, a 2, which is sort of the average score we're getting out of a four-point rubric, students are saying, dogs and wolves are similar because, they'll list three reasons, and they'll have a closing sentence. So they have the structure. What they're not doing is sort of giving the explanation about their reasons. So they're not pulling the details about the details, and so it's that going the extra step. And so we've done a lot of work around open response, and we need to continue to try to help students expand beyond answering the question at more of a surface level. So, you know, we've been doing it. We have, we're writing, we have another group of teachers writing goals around open response, some in math, some in ELA, and we'll continue to work on it. I think it's certainly an area. Writing is an area that can help us pick up points on MCAS for sure, both in long composition at the 4th grade level and in open response. We're better than the state. It's a state issue as well, but it certainly is an area that there are points left. The superintendent talked about rigor, and rigor is interesting. We know that students need to see the material that's as rigorous as the material they're going to see on the exam, and that, you know, students, even students that are below grade level, need to be exposed to grade-level material so that they're not sort of shocked when they, you know, take these exams. I think we do a fabulous job of accommodating students and making sure they're met at their just right instructional level. At times, we need to make sure that they're seeing rigorous grade-level material. We've talked in this room before that we need to balance rigor with the social-emotional growth. That's so important to me and so important to the staff at Russell Street School and the 21st century learning that we're bringing, because for me, the most important thing we do in elementary school is create a love of learning. And so I want to make sure students are leaving Russell Street School, loving school, and being self-learners and self-growers, and that we're not raising a level of rigor to a point where we're overwhelming students and making school something that is not a love for them. So there's certainly a seesaw balance there and a tightrope that we're walking a little bit to make sure that we're exposing students to challenging material, but we're still creating a love of learning. It's something that we talk about often. Measurement and data and fractions continue to be a little bit of an area of weakness. That's something that Pete's, you know, talked about and will continue to work on. Another thing that is new this year, and this is, you know, exciting for me because it's really teacher-led, and like I said, one of the things I want to focus on is maintaining the morale of our fabulous staff and making sure there's an excitement and a buzz in the building. And so there's not a ton of new initiatives this year. I really want to make sure that we're supporting our teachers to do the great work that they're doing. But Pete's working with some of our teachers, in particular, grade 5, to pilot sort of encouraging students to take more ownership of their own learning. And so they're using what are called ICANN statements. And so they're taking the standards, and they're turning them into ICANN statements that students should be able to say. So, you know, if there's a standard, it's turned into student language so that at the end of this lesson or at the end of this unit, students should be able to say, I can whatever. And so, you know, teachers are using them in a variety of ways. And so students are taking some ownership to be able to say, you know, can you do that or can't you? They're doing some graphing of how they're progressing on those standards. And so we're trying to encourage the idea that as a classroom community, here's what we're attacking, and, you know, as a learner, you have a responsibility to get there, and it's our job to support you, and we're gonna, you know, we're on this path together. And I think that, that's been going great. I'm gonna jump down to the curriculum maps piece, which Pete has also been instrumental in. When I got here, we had been talking a whole lot about Atlas Curriculum Maps, and that had been a big initiative that had been going on in the district. Those are being revamped a little bit in mathematics to try to make them a more active, live document. And so we're trying to add in all kinds of materials that teachers will find useful, make sure that they start with the standard, and they come down, and they're not just the lessons in the main math program and the time that they're taught, and so that they're an actual sort of daily useful go-to place for teachers as a resource. And so I think that that is another initiative that's coming up from Pete and from the teachers that has the potential to really make sure that we're hitting every single standard to mastery for students. I mentioned that we rescheduled grade 5 math. One of the things in our, the way we switched in grade 5, and I alluded to it last year, was that mathematics was only 40, 45 minutes in length because it was in a rotation cycle with science and social studies. We added some math time last year to get us through the end of the year. This year, math is not in the rotation cycle. Science and social studies switch, and math stays in the classroom. That allows teachers to teach at least 60 minutes of math, if not more. So if there's a need to, for a teacher to spend long run math, they're able to do that. We're hopeful that that extra time is allowing students to not feel so rushed in math and be able to take the time that they need to reteach, have small groups, have activities in place. We're continuing to use Achieve 3000, which, as I've discussed previously, is rigorous nonfiction. We had a trainer in recently, I'll talk about in a minute, who's worked with the staff, and we're excited about really having a full year of Achieve 3000 in place and what that might do for our students in their ability to analyze nonfiction, answer both multiple choice questions, and be able to do some open response work. And we're going to continue with high-level professional development. The Russell Street staff did PD on Web's Depth of Knowledge, which is all about cognitive rigor of both materials and assessments. We've been talking about Journeys and the rigorous material in our new Journeys pilot. And we just recently had the trainer, as I mentioned, for Achieve 3000 come in, who actually talked a little bit about test-taking strategies with our teachers and helping students identify question types, and sort of saying, if we can help students understand when you get a question, if you can identify what type of question it is, there's strategies about how you can go back and find the information that you need, so you're not feeling so overwhelmed. And so I think that's good information. Our teachers feel like they can empower our students to be able to go back, and some of them are easy things. You know, she said to teachers, if it's a main idea question, and there's a picture in the article, the main idea is usually in the caption of the picture. So, you know, things that students can use to help themselves go back and make sure they have the right answer. So there's lots going on. I'm proud of the work that's going on in classrooms with teachers and students. I think our scores, you know, are solid. We continue to want to improve. You know, we're gonna continue to reach out and see what's going on for best practices, or as the superintendent would say, next practices. But I'm proud of the work that's going on at Russell Street School, and I think families should be very proud of the classrooms and the experience that their students are, their children are getting. If you happen to answer questions.
I have some this time, but I'll let you go.
I saw you writing feverishly over there.
Go ahead, Chuck. You go first this time.
First, the format that you had, I'm a visual guy. I like the visual, the charts and the colors and the way it's laying out. I think it's easier for me to see and to understand. I think it's probably easier for folks at home, seeing on the screen and understanding versus a lot of verbiage and, you know, the tables, the numbers and stuff. We need to boil it all down and say, okay, this is the current 6th grade classes, when they took the 3rd, 4th, 5th, the colored bands. I think that's a nice way to present it. It tells a story. And it's simple. It's very visual. It's in one slide. I appreciate that. I like the fact that you guys all do this with the next steps and, you know, taking the data points and having a strategy based on the data points to improve. And I think that's awesome. Talking about life skills earlier, and we're talking about doing some of the stuff that John's talking to the PTA about at the high school, but the ICANN statements, positive affirmation, that stuff that, frankly, I didn't, I wasn't exposed to that until I was at college. And it was, you know, reading Tony Robbins books and Napoleon Hill and Cullen, one of your guys. But if kids are learning that in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, that's, that's gonna help them throughout their lives, you know, to begin with the end in mind. Say, I can, and then know what the, the goal is at the end of the, at the end of the lesson.
Right.
And I love Valerie Kennedy is great about study skills and strategies and things like that. So if you guys are introducing those to them, that's tremendous. It's, every student learns differently, just like each of us received your information differently, and some of us have more questions than others. I'm not pointing to anybody in particular. But you just all digest it differently. I think it's, I think, I appreciate what you guys are all doing, and certainly what teachers are doing. And I think your focus on morale is awesome. They deserve it, and I appreciate it on their account at least.
Thank you. I'll pass that along. They're working hard.
They are. Thanks.
No, I, I too appreciate the work you're doing there. And I also find, I think, the graphs convey things a little quicker than the, than the tables there. My one area of concern, and you, you did already touch on it, was the, the SGP scores, particularly at, at grade 4 there. And that might also be something to just look at in the graphs, because I think the graph that showed the statewide dip and our dip matched that in terms of just the number of proficient. That's pretty, pretty consistent and explainable by the first explanation we got of, you know, from the superintendent about the alignment of the test and, you know, the development levels of the children and stuff there. The SGP scores doesn't quite fit in that same explanation in, in a sense there, because it's, those are recalibrated based on the whole peer set of the students moving forward. So there is, there is a little anomaly there, and I'm glad you're gonna be looking into that a little bit more. The other question I had, I guess that was more of a statement than a question there. You mentioned about the interventions, stuff about the students in the needs improvement category. Are you seeing students, the same students year after year in those categories? Are you seeing students progress out of it and other students try falling down into those categories? Or, you know?
Well, I think that varies from grade to grade. So we certainly move students out from one category to another, but especially from 3rd grade to 4th grade, we certainly move students down as well. You know, one of the things that I was saying to Mark when Dr. Jamien was speaking is growth scores can be deceiving. For instance, from 3rd grade to 4th grade, you could have a great growth score with a very small increase in your score because so many kids go down going into 4th grade, right? So that growth score can be very deceiving. So you, we often, and I'm sure Dr. Branco meets with 7th grade parents, I often meet with 4th grade parents who get anxious about their scores, and I have this whole conversation, like, listen, I mean, excuse me, 5th grade students after they see the 4th grade scores, because it's surprising, and my child did so well, and now, you know, what happened to this dip? And it's, it's anxiety-provoking. But I might say, hey, listen, look at their growth score. Like, yeah, they went down, but that just says, like, the test was really, really a lot harder. Like, it's a much different exam. You know, there's not really open response on the 3rd grade test. There's a few short answers. There might be one open response, if I'm recalling correctly. Then you get into all this writing in 4th grade. So it's a significant difference and challenge that students are asked to take on. Having been a previous 4th grade teacher, you know, we used to trumpet it, like, you know, we, we always take the beating as, you know, the kids, you know, everybody thinks, oh, what's going on with all these 4th grade teachers? It's every school in the state, 4th grade feels like, you know, what's wrong? Why, why is it always our students that take this dip, you know? And I can guarantee you that our 4th grade staff is doing tremendous work, and, you know, they're doing all the same things that everybody else is doing. But I do, we are all wondering why those growth scores look like that. You know, I have the numbers in front of me. In ELA, last year, we had an overall school growth score of 59, this year 41. In math, 55, this year 47. You know, does that mean a whole bunch of other schools did some amazing things and their kids grew faster? We didn't really do anything that we can look back on and say, oh, well, you know, we rolled out Achieve 3000, and that's why growth scores went. You know, there's nothing that we can look at and say, you know, oh, well, three new, three teachers left, or, you know, there's nothing that we can point to for that. So we need to see if it becomes a trend, or if it's an anomaly this year, or what the story is. But it certainly is on our radar that that is unusual. Now, again, 40 is still a moderate growth. You know, we'd like to certainly see 50. And we, like, last year we had 59 in ELA. We were really proud of those growth scores. So we'll keep an eye on it for next year. It's, it was certainly a big part of our data team conversations about growth. And as the superintendent implied, now as we get into our at-risk learner meetings, we're gonna be looking at individual students and all the data. And so it'll be, what do the MAP scores look like? What, what performance category were they in for MCAS? What was their growth score? You know, where are we going from here? What's the best intervention for them? The math and science interventionists, the literacy interventionists, we'll all be looking at data. So, you know, it's, it's a piece of the puzzle at that point. But to your original question, we certainly move students both ways. I would, I would like to think that we move more students up, but depending upon what grade you're going from and to plays a role at, at our level for sure.
It's only our, our second year of, of dealing with growth scores.
Yeah.
And the more we look at them, the more we realize that it's, it's a mistake to look at an SGP in isolation by itself. There are too many other variables that come into play. You can have a group of students, for example, that, that have the same score, but they've moved up to that score. They're, they're achieving at the top of their cognitive ability levels at that particular time. You may also have
You may also have a group of students that aren't performing at their ability levels. Then all of a sudden, they get serious. They're going to have, they're going to have more of a jump. So, the groups aren't as homogeneous as one would think when we first started looking at SGP. So, just a caution, that's why I keep saying, I said at the beginning of the meeting, is we can't, we can't look at that data point in isolation. I think it does injustice to the bigger picture. And we're still, we're still trying to figure out all the nuances with SGP. I mean, they're preset, for example. The criteria are preset. It's not, it's not set after the data is there. It's preset before they have the data, which is interesting. I mean, that's not uncommon, but that also adds more mystery to the equation.
One of the things we found interesting was, we had two students in our partially separate special education program at Russell Street in fourth grade last year in mathematics, who had growth scores over 92 or 93, you know, tremendously high growth scores. And so, there's always, you know, you never know where you're going to find those gems of tremendously high growth. Sometimes it, you know, and there were other students in that program in other grades with the exact same teacher, the exact same pedagogy, the exact same materials, who didn't have tremendous growth. And so, sometimes you just hit a student when they're primed for growth, you know, and they're just ready. And, because I went to that teacher and said, what's the magic? You know, you got these two students that, you know, what can you share with the rest of us, you know? And she said, listen, it just clicked for those two kids last year that, you know, I didn't do anything drastically different with them than I did with my fifth graders or my third graders, but it just clicked for them. They were ready, you know? And so, and then you hear stories about fifth graders, and, you know, you guys have all had fifth graders, and the fifth-grade staff will say every year, we've got a handful of students who have fifth-grade spring fever, and just MCAS isn't important to them, you know? And they're great math students, and I see their scores, and the teachers will say, I see their scores, and I can't believe that they mailed MCAS in, and they ended up, you know, in the low needs improvement. I know they're a great math student. So, there's lots of factors when it comes to MCAS, and kids are kids, and sometimes it's their best, and sometimes they have a bad day, and sometimes, you know, we just need to take what the data tells us and what's valuable about it and continue to get better. And, you know, it's like Chuck said, I think if we continue every year to do something better that we learned from this data analysis, then it was worthwhile. You know, we're not going to turn something on its ear in one year. It's a, it's a long process, you know? But there's all kinds of factors, and, you know, every year we find some kind of shining star and something that surprises us. This year, growth score surprised us. You know, I'm not sure what that's all about. We have our fingers crossed that next year, that's a lot better.
I appreciate all that. You know, I think that you've hit on the issues relative to, you know, we always look at the Russell Street scores are something that we all always look at, and we say to ourselves, gee. But I think what we're getting a sense of is, some of it is, the test, as you talked about, the fourth-grade test is interesting. And Kelly, you've hit on it a couple times tonight. Are we confident that the test is appropriate to the cognitive level of the kid, children at that age? And that's a legitimate point of view. And you gave the examples, Scott, of the way they answered the open response. And I'm sitting there going, really? That's what we're asking third-grade kids to do? That seems like a lot, that we're going to get a consistent, you know, level of response all the time from third graders like that. And I think what we've seen over the years, at least I've seen over the years, as we've seen this presentation a lot of times now, is we've changed the way we use the MCAS. It originally was designed for a high-school baseline, can you get out of school and go function in the real world type of look at the world. And now, then we started pushing it down through the grades, and it became, at first it was a simplistic analysis, proficient, needs improvement, warning, yada, yada, yada. Now, it's more, we've added the school growth measures, we're doing cohort analysis, so we track the kids year by year instead of just looking at third grade, you know, because the kids change. Especially in Littleton, that's so, because it's not always statistically relevant, because our sample size isn't always as large as we had, you know, 1,000 kids in a grade or 600 kids in a grade. We don't, we have 100 plus. You know, it can be interesting to see how that changes year by year and not always relevant to what we're trying to do. I think we've modified the way we use MCAS along with the other assessments that we've started to use, and you're, and I think you're hitting on a hit. It's informing instruction, it's a, it's a tool in the belt, along with all these other things that we're doing, and we're getting better at determining how we can provide intervention and how we can improve instruction. And you also said it, it will improve over time. You haven't added any new programs? That's really important to me. I think that'll give, you said, it'll give the staff some breathing room, allow them to relax a little bit and not feel like, oh, we got to change again, we got to change again. We've hit upon that in the past. Are we adding too much year by year? So, I'm glad that we haven't, and I'm fine with, let's keep pushing and looking at it, and I'm confident that we'll be fine relative to what we expect out of this, you know, level of, you know, cognitive development at this age.
I really appreciate that, and I think, I'll just tell this story quickly. We, I went over these results at school council previously, and one of our parents on school council, you know, talked about having familiarity with another district that happens to have high-performing scores. And I don't think this is indicative of all high-performing districts, but what she said to us at school council was, listen, my child loves to come to school, loves Russell Street School, can't wait to get out of the car, can't wait to come to school. She said, I know of a district that has great scores because I'm there a lot, and the kids are all stressed out. It's like, it's not fun, it's stressed out, kids are anxious, it's a difficult place to be. And so, I think we want to, and the reason I say it's going to take time is, we want to continue to get better, and I appreciate the support of the committee not pushing so hard that we cause anxiety for staff and students, because I think Russell Street School is a special place, and we could break that by pushing too hard. So, as long as we continue to improve and kids love school, and we see what happens as they go to the middle school, and they go to our high school, and they become successful citizens in college or career, I think we're doing it right. And I think that we could break that by pushing too hard on our teachers and students at grades three, four, and five.
For a particular goal, just one goal, that may or may not be as meaningful as we initially thought it was.
Right.
When we started introducing these tests.
Right.
Fairly a long time ago.
And that doesn't mean we're not looking at data, we're not improving, we're not always trying new things, but if we only focused on 100 miles an hour ahead on this, I think we could really lose a whole lot of great things that are going on.
I think what we're striving for is balance, and I think you're making the point that we do have balance. We're always looking to improve, but not by getting out of balance, because then it will be robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Right.
And one data point shouldn't override all of the other data points that we have.
Exactly. And that's why we're so more robust at being able to do this now. This was just, the MCAS has been, has grown in the way we use it as a diagnostic tool, but it's not the only thing we use anymore. We use a lot of other things, and in some ways, I'm more interested in some of the other things than I am in MCAS. You know, it's just a way of looking at it, some of the other ones seem to be a little more interesting to me personally. So, thank you.
I'd just say, we're doing great. We're supposed to finish at nine. We've got 25 more minutes to go, two more to go, which is off the hook, he doesn't have to do MCAS. Let's just keep going, okay?
I'd like to first thank, thank Mr. Vazilo for throwing me right under the bus to admit out loud that we were talking during Dr. Jamien's portion.
That was noted. That was noted. That was on live TV, by the way. Thank you. And secondly, I know you're picking on, you know, the length a little, but we've got 55 slides. What I'd like you to understand is, at the building level, we've got hundreds and hundreds of pages of data at every single building that we comb through with faculty and staff in a variety of ways, and there's a lot of it we don't even print, just for the obvious reasons. So, it's just, it's endless amounts of data. And so, while, yeah, it's in a long 55-slide presentation, people have to understand that it's a daunting task to just get to this point where we can explain it thoughtfully. And so, that doesn't just happen with four principals and a director of curriculum. There's a ton of people at the levels at every building doing a lot of hard work. Forget about teaching the kids, but just to get to the point where we can explain it to. So, I just want to acknowledge those people for all that work. So, the first slide gives you your kind of a major overview of proficiency numbers. You know, we remain strong in ELA. We've seen a little bit of a slide a couple years in a row when you compare apples to oranges from one grade level to the next. But when we talk about the cohort data in a few minutes together, I'll address the specific growth or areas of concern by grade level, obviously. Same thing in math. Math has been relatively consistent over the past couple of years in this area, down a little bit. And then, in science, big gains, two straight years in a row, a plus-two and then a plus-nine in science, and a major focus of the team as far as doing a big curriculum initiative and a lot of hard work. We also have Mr. Schumaker integrating some of the science and technology and engineering, particularly the technology and engineering strands sub-separately through his program. And we attribute, now that we've done a lot of data analysis, into areas of growth at the middle school over the past three years. We attribute some of our major areas of growth to the fact that the kids get that taught in a different format and not kind of glossed through quickly embedded in the science classroom. It allows the science teachers more time to do the real science work, and it allows the kids to get a deeper understanding of the tech and engineering side in a unique way. Not every school does it that way. I think there are a lot of factors into why we're so strong in science right now, but I do think that that piece of how we structure the learning environment for our kids cannot be lost. We do have school improvement goals around these numbers that I'll talk about the end of the presentation. So, we will obviously take a quick look at patterns over time, and that's something I talk a lot about when you look at data. One year down, one year up is, whether it's my own daughter's MCAS scores or an entire group of students at a school, is really not that eye-opening to me, but I do look at patterns over time. So, we'll talk about that a little bit. And the ELA staff is concerned about how hard they're working and where our scores have been, and how over time we've seen a little bit of a dip from cohort A related to B to C. However, they are proud of the impact they've had on individual cohorts. So, there's a disconnect between the cohort progress and the overall numbers. So, we're going to have to dig into that a little bit as an ELA team. Lot of areas of growth or strength that I've highlighted, I've just picked some out, because I promised these guys I'd keep it to one slide. So, eighth-grade ELA, for example, 91% proficient and advanced. That's up 3% from 2013. We were up 3% the year before. That's up three years of incredible growth. So, when you're talking about patterns over time, eighth-grade versus another eighth-grade versus another eighth-grade, that's a really positive thing at the eighth-grade level. And so, you know, when you talk about your students graduating and moving on for college and career readiness, my seniors, our seniors are the eighth graders. And so, you'll hear me talk about the, and if you've had middle school children, you know this, the ebb and flow and the unpredictability of middle school children in general in all facets of their life. So, the fifth-grade parents, when they come up to meet me in that big forum the first time, they hear me say the same thing every year. Every kid comes into the middle school at a different level, socially, emotionally, and academically. Some come in ready to go to Harvard at fifth grade, others, we're just hoping by the end of eighth grade that we're carrying them up to the next high school. So, our goal is to get them to the exit-grade level as prepared as possible for that next level. So, that in ELA, that's a proud moment for us. So, where we see some of this in the sixth and the seventh, as Scott talked about, there's a lot of factors that go into that, but there's some consistency over time with our results coming out of eighth grade that we're really proud of. Same thing in math, huge turnaround over the past three or four years in our math program. You've been very supportive of all of that work when it comes to faculty and curricular changes and scheduling changes and program adoptions. And so, we kind of see the fruits of those labors again at the exit-grade level. If you recall, I believe we were down in the 60s and 70% range when I arrived here five years ago, and there's been a lot, a lot of hard work by a lot of great people to get to where we are now. So, we've got 82% proficient and advanced, up 7% from the year before. And if you recall, before that, it was 14% and 19%. So, those are some massive gains coming out of the eighth grade. It's not just eighth-grade work. It's the culmination of math, staff, great programming, hard work amongst all four staff members. So, that needs to be stated out loud. Sixth-grade math, 64% proficient and advanced, and while that number statistically looks lower compared to the other grade levels, we do want to note that there's been some up and down in that area. So, that's up 2%. The previous year, we were down, the previous year, we're down. So, we had, we had a dip for two or three straight years there, and then a lot of factors shifted last year in sixth grade, and so, we did see an uptick right at the end of last year in sixth grade, and we're going to continue that trend, I have no doubt, based on what's happening in sixth grade this current year. And in eighth-grade science, I can't say enough about this. You know, we stood here before you two years ago talking about curriculum review, and we're in the second year, and we're ready to pile up brand-new curriculum and programming next year. And if you remember, I put out that document last year, and we cited like eight or nine or 10 schools that we were looking at, and Dr. Affinity looks at that list now and realizes that we just outpaced all of them, which is a fascinating thing, and it's a proud moment for the science department at the middle school. And we hope that the high school is appreciative and really ready, because those kids are ready to crank at the high school. It's going to be surprising as they get up there, I think.
Ready.
So, I know you are. So, you know, we don't talk about the rankings a lot, but that is a nice proud moment for those guys to know that we were the 14th-ranked school out of all of the schools in eighth grade, out of 445 schools, from the Boston Globe, and that's gone up every year. Again, some interesting changes to curriculum, but really just, I believe it's been focused on specific areas of teaching, and we've got three great science teachers and a great tech teacher. We're focusing hard on what the kids need to know and be able to do, and that's obviously translating to results. Some of the areas of strength that we talked about in SGP and the student growth, seventh and eighth-grade math demonstrated strong overall SGP, and my, you know, we talked about the definition of strong for the purposes of this presentation. I was stating strong as high to very high. So, that's actually anybody above 60%, which is pretty, that's a pretty aggressive benchmark for me to choose, actually, for this presentation, and that's what I chose. So, we're close to 50% in the seventh grade, and 73% of our eighth graders in math demonstrated high achievement and growth. So, a lot of great work in seventh and eighth-grade math when it comes to, when it comes to growth. And that's an interesting, when you, we flip to the cohort, and when you look at areas of concern, you will also see seventh-grade math listed. So, there's an interesting disconnect between the pieces of data. So, while our proficiency levels have dipped in seventh grade, as they do statewide for many reasons that we know and don't know, the growth of our particular children went up. And so, when we talk about kids by name, that's an important thing for me. So, you know, the whole state does this, our kids do that, but our kids, when you look at their growth compared to all the other kids dipped, was extremely strong, especially when I choose that aggressive number of 60%. Also, a proud moment here is that in the proficiency categories, seventh and eighth-grade math students demonstrated very, very strong student growth results. So, in our advanced categories, we're doing very strong in our proficient categories, which we didn't talk about last year. We only talked about advanced categories with you guys last year. So, both proficient and advanced, doing good work there. And a fascinating stat, when you talk about best practices and replication of good work, more than half of our seventh-grade ELA and eighth-grade math students with disabilities demonstrated strong SGP. And again, that's 60%. That's high to very high. That's more than half, and when you talk about that particular population of kids, as you look through the slides, which I know you already did, you'll see that that is an area of concern for us at the middle school overall, is the population of students who have disabilities. But something clicked in seventh-grade ELA and eighth-grade math. And as Principal Vazilo alluded to, you're not really sure if it can be replicated practices to make that happen again, or if you just hit the kid at their moment of readiness. But we're having great conversations about what practices did happen in those two particular areas that can be replicated. And when I talk about next steps, I'll talk to you about some changes that the teachers have made already based on these results and some of our data work. When we talk about areas for consideration, seventh-grade ELA dipped with 80% proficient and advanced, but I'd like, you know, to recognize that in 2012 and '11, they remained steady at 85%. So, that's a cohort concern of ours, not a over-time concern. If I see that dip three, four years in a row, then we have other conversations, but we don't, we have not seen that. That is a particular concern for our current eighth graders that we're talking about as an ELA team. But I'd like you to note, when you get to the cohort slides, you'll see that we remain strong with 79% proficient and advanced, which is the same as 2013.[1744.33] strong with 79% proficient in advanced, which is the same as 2013. We've improved our numbers in needs improvement, and we have zero percents of our seventh grade students in the warning category, which has a massive win for us. So again, you see a dip in the apples to oranges comparison, but growth if I look at kids by name. Seventh grade math, 56% proficient advanced. This is down from one year, but in 2013, we were way up by 13%. At 12, we were down in five. So really, you're just seeing this, you're seeing the roller coaster again in seventh grade. Fascinating when you talk about seventh grade and also fourth grade. In the Branko House, I have a seventh grader and I have a third grader getting ready for fourth. And I will tell you, when I work on third grade homework, it is very obvious to an educator that there is a purpose and a structure and a setup because everybody knows fourth grade is coming. And so I'm living it right now as a parent that I know Ben's going to hit it in fourth grade and Hannah's hitting it right now in seventh. And if you've ever had a 13-year-old child, the fact that they can come to school and perform well, you know, half the time they're in school is actually a win based on everything that they go through in their tough lives. Young adolescents is difficult. So when you see a little of this, it's just part of life. And so if it's patterns over time like this, I have a different concern. So so far, I haven't seen patterns over time that are concerning in this area. The one that is concerning to me is that in all grades and subjects, with the exception of eighth grade math, 50% or more of our students with disabilities scored needs improvement or warning. That has been a trend. I haven't dug into the special ed population trends at the state level enough because really I am digging in hard at the middle school. And again, we'll talk about next steps, but it's about identifying kids by name and by need and making sure we have programs, the right people, and doing the right work in place to try to address that. I don't have a lot of answers. If that's a question, you're already prepared, but I will, I will address the question later. But I will tell you that it's a major focus of ours this year because there's a correlation between this population of students and their performance level and their low growth that has the entire faculty concerned at this point in time. And so that's where we're focusing. So when we look at our cohort data, this is the eighth, last year's eighth grade, our current ninth grade. Relatively flat moving from seventh to eighth grade with this group, 89% to 90% shift in proficiency in advanced, 9% to 5% in needs improvement and uptick in warning from 2% to 5%. But overall, relatively flat here, pretty solid work happening. Happy with the 90% proficiency in advanced. That's a fantastic number for us at the middle school. If we can keep that happening and get that small, and remember, Mike talked clearly about in a small district and a small school, 5% in a big district and in a big school is way different than when you're talking about what's in that tiny number in that slide, 103 students. So you do the math at 5%. We're doing, yeah, we're doing pretty well.
Five kids.
Yeah, five kids. So, you know, we need to be realistic. That's why, that's why these slides are better, quite honestly, because it really puts a lot of stuff in perspective for us. And so we're doing great work there in that particular area. Seventh grade, which is our current eighth graders, again, and these are actually impressive results if you've lived with seventh graders and worked with seventh graders. So we've got 79% to 79%, that's a consistent, flat-line proficient in advanced, sorry. Thank you, sir. Needs improvement went up, 18% to 21, and that's a positive swing because we had, we went from 3% of our children in this particular cohort in warning to zero. So in the toughest grade level, if you're a parent, probably the most tumultuous year of your child's life in this particular moment in time, and the year that the long comp hits, nobody hit warning that year. So that's some, that's some solid work with that group of seventh graders. So this is where the disconnect is, right? You go back to slide one, and you saw a 10% drop comparing apples to oranges, not a concern mine, because this is fantastic information for me. So our sixth grade results, our current seventh graders, again, pretty flat going from fifth to sixth grade, 79% proficient in advanced moves to 78, 16% need improvement moves to 17, and a dead tie 5% warning to 5% warning. So it's kind of funny, because you'll hear me say this later again, but maintenance is not necessarily a bad word all the time. That's a transition year. So again, if you've had a child go from fifth to sixth, that's a stressful year for the family, for the kids. What am I walking into? More teachers, new structure, you know, a lot of shifts. Homework expectations go up, curricular expectations go up. So to be relatively flat and have decent numbers like that makes me feel pretty good about the work we're doing transitioning kids into the middle school. And then you see an uptick, and then you really see good exit numbers of the eighth grade. So I really don't have a lot of concerns here. Again, we've identified the 5% out of 129 kids who are in the warning category, and I'll talk about that moving forward. Remember also just publicly that this is the biggest group of kids. This is the one we were concerned about. This is the one that we've talked a lot about for two or three years, and we're doing good work with that group of kids. So that's, you know, when we talked about class size, we talked about transition and how we're going to deal with the fact that we had a bubble grade. So far, the data is pretty solid there with that particular group of kids, and I'm proud of that. Our eighth graders in mathematics, big uptick again, two, three years in a row. So proficiency advanced went from 74% to 83% of our students, and that's within the cohort. Needs improvement went down, and when I looked at kids by name, that went down, and the majority of them, actually all of them, went to proficient in advanced. So when that number goes down, sometimes you look at it right, you say, well, unless, you know, you guys don't have the names in front of you like I do. So you start to wonder, well, did the needs improvement go down because kids went into warning? And it did not. It went down. And as you can see, our warning went from 7% to 4% as well. So they all went up. So that's fantastic work coming out of the eighth grade, and there's our exit grade that we're proud of. So we need to duplicate that with the current seventh grade, follow that uptick as they come out of eighth grade. This is our eighth grade, current eighth graders, these are seventh grade numbers. So a nice increase in advanced students. So proficiency in advanced overall goes down 61 to 56, not a drastic drop-off when you compare the kids to themselves, but actually, there's a nice increase in the advanced category. So when you, you know, when you break it down by each category, that's a nice thing. The cohort has slipped overall two years in a row, and we're looking at that, both in ELA and math. And respectfully, we believe it's a cohort issue and is totally unrelated to curriculum and teaching, and we need to get, we did a ton of analysis on this grade by name, and we're doing it, or they're still doing that work. So we believe that that's not, you know, an instructional issue or a curricular issue. It's just, this happens to be the profile of this group, and we need to really take care of this group of kids overall. Many of them are doing well, but we've got a group of kids that we need to really kind of focus on moving forward this year. So we're looking strongly at the individual student data, and we're planning instructional and programmatic changes that can be specifically used to attack, to attack this group. Sixth grade results for our current seventh graders, again, relatively flat here, very steady in advanced, a little slippage in our proficient level. And so we're taking a look at that. These are kids moving from sixth grade to seventh grade, so they're currently in seventh grade. So our math teacher has been working in the seventh grade with our math lab teacher. Actually, all three of the teachers have been, and that's something I'll talk about in a minute. But the math lab teacher, we freed her up one day a week so that she's doing instruction in the classroom, targeted instruction with some groups of kids, Monday, Tuesdays, or Thursdays, Fridays. And on Wednesdays, she pushes into the classrooms to provide support and embedded, authentic, targeted instruction and support. That's a shift we made coming out of last year, and we believe we're going to see some gains there as we move forward. This is the only slide that looks like the old one because the DESE hasn't caught up in the science category yet, apparently, and kept the new version of this slides. So we talked a lot about the science and the positive growth. Interesting, when you look at it as a cohort, please remember that this is data moving from grade five to eight. So this isn't year after year after year because it looks flat, which gives you no real credit and real understanding for the amount of curriculum that has been absorbed by these young brains and then spit out the other end in eighth grade in a very positive way that, again, puts us up at the 14th-ranked school in the state. So this is one of those places where even though you might love these charts or chart representation, it doesn't actually do us that much justice because it's not annual data. But I would by no means categorize this as flat at all. So we talked a lot about our next steps here. So you've heard from both Dr. Jamien and Principal Zidlow about data teams. We had a large-scale data team meeting, which is something, it's a shift at the middle school. Instead of holding some separate data team meetings in different locations on different days, we brought ELA, math, and science together in the same room, albeit at separate tables, but in the same room by teams so that our special ed teachers, and you've heard me kind of talk a little bit about that already tonight, so that our special ed teachers could be in the same room. And so that Dr. Jamien and I, and she joined us that day, could give a front load of the data and then let them do all of the good work as content teams cross-graded and analyze each other's kids and analyze each other's data. And the special ed team was right there in the mix, and they didn't have to be in 12 different locations on 12 different days. They could stay right there, they could go from group to group to group work and pay attention to what's going on in the content area and lend their voice specifically to the needs of our special ed population. Really robust meeting, tons of work went into that, using a Google Doc tracking system now, which is fantastic so that we can do all the work asynchronously. So what's happening is there are still teachers, and some of them are probably doing it right now, believe it or not, because that's who they are, that are still analyzing data and putting stuff into the document, you know, on their own as they come across new information, as they discover something in another set of data. And so this is going to be our running record of how we've analyzed our data, and there is included in the running record are our next steps and what each teacher individually and on content area has decided that they are going to do differently or what they're going to continue to do. So it's allowed me to get in there and really take a good look, and I can read them all at my leisure, and I can go back and ask questions. It's a very efficient way to plan it, and I think we'll probably reproduce that kind of a meeting a little earlier next year because this was our first run at it. It took a long time to get all the data absorbed in a way that we could do it this way. We identified, I'm not going to read the whole slide to you, areas of strength, so you could see what we did. We reviewed pedagogical best practices. I think I spoke about this about a month ago when we talked about a follow-up to the SIPs, but math skill drills in eighth grade and the science SKIZZERS, which stands for Science Concepts and Skills Review, those two things were developed specifically to give kids embedded practice. We don't apologize for that. We don't teach to the test. We say that a million times. We teach to the standards, but we shouldn't apologize for prepping kids for a specific test that they're going to come to in their life. You take CPA exam, you take the bar exam, heck, my plumber takes an exam, my parents are in the medical field and both took exams, teachers are taking exams. At some point in time, I'm guessing everybody in the planet is going to take an exam to do something for a living. That's what it feels like. And so my roommate in college became an accountant, and an entire semester of his life was dedicated to passing that exam. And so we're not saying dedicate an entire section of a child's life, but you have to set them up for success if you're going to ask them for these experiences. Otherwise, to go back to what Scott hit, you're going to talk about stress and anxiety. And we're trying not to have, there's enough of that with most middle school children today. We're trying to not make it worse. So we have set them up well. We are trying to duplicate these best practices. So the SKIZZERS and the math skill drills, the departments are talking about having that trickle down, and it takes time because they're created by teachers. We didn't buy them prepackaged. They're developed by our in-house pros specifically to meet the needs of our kids in relationship to prepping them for the MCAS style questions. So that's going to take time, but our goal is to have SKIZZERS in sixth, seventh, and eighth science and to have the skill drills in sixth, seventh, and eighth math because we believe that those two changes, bless you, that those two changes actually were part of the reason our eighth grade scores were so strong moving up. We're going to continue with, you've heard this for years since I've been here, we're going to continue with PD and continued implementation of co-teaching in English Language Arts and Math. We just sent out the sixth grade and the eighth grade teams to a very, very solid professional development program in co-teaching. The only reason we didn't send the seventh grade team in the spirit of full disclosure is Ms. Stanton is on maternity leave. So we're waiting until she comes back, and then we'll send the seventh grade team out as well, just to check our practices and upgrade our practices in the area of co-teaching. If you remember, just for the public, co-teaching is when we have a special educator in the classroom with the professional content teacher. So in the math room, that's a section of kids that have a math teacher and a special ed teacher at the same time to make sure that kids are taken care of, and we can cover accommodations and modifications, and we can meet the kids' needs where we need to in a much higher-level way than we can in other classes. I believe it's going to be at the core of helping us crack the problem of how come we have students with disabilities at the middle school not making growth and staying in warning and needs improvement? I think we have to continue to work on our co-teaching methodology. I believe in my heart that most students need to be in the regular classroom. I believe it. I don't want more and more kids pulled out because I don't think they ever come back. So I want to leave them in the regular classroom with as many supports as possible and give them intervention outside of the classroom, but not pull them out into a different math setting. A very, very small group of kids will always need it, but I don't want to react like some schools have. Some schools have gone the other way and said, we got this problem, we're going to yank it out and address the problem. And I want the content pro that got hired and is getting paid to teach math, to teach the math, and the special ed pro who understands that part of the job to work on that part of the job. And I think that's the partnership we need to continue to push on at the middle school. And we're going to continue to do that. We've also talked about planning time. This was a crucial piece that came out of the training for the co-teaching. So I just met with the leadership team last week to talk about the fact that we have, as you know, common planning time at the middle school. It's used in a variety of ways. One of the major shifts, starting after Thanksgiving, is that every week, the grade-level special ed teacher will meet once a week with the math teacher to plan for the week, and the special ed teacher will meet once a week with the grade-level ELA teacher to plan lessons and units and flow up once a week. That has not happened proactively based on schedule and the way we function, quite honestly. We think that what we heard loud and clear in the training is you need to do that planning ahead of time instead of in a reactionary way. And so we're trying to make that work in our schedule. I think we've created a structure that will allow for that. That's a big shift because at the middle school, our teams are used to meeting as-grade-level teams five days a week to talk about kids, to talk about young adolescents, to talk about the social, emotional needs, to talk about the business of what's going on on team, a lot of different things. And so now, this is a huge commitment to this population and to supporting them this way that twice a week, two of their colleagues won't be in those meetings, and they'll be meeting for the specific purpose of addressing this population of students in math and ELA. So all I can tell you now is we think that that's going to be positive, but I'll have to stay tuned for next year, quite honestly, and let us do it for here. Our current math lab model, we will continue with this model. This did not make the slideshow because she had to finish the data crunch, and I'd like to, I'd like to put it out there on the record because people always ask about intervention programs and when we add programs, and this was something that was supported when I first came in here. So our math lab numbers in the sixth grade last year, 100%, 100% of our math lab participants maintained or increased their score. And again, I'm going to say it, maintenance is not a bad word. They went up a year in curriculum. So 100% of them maintained or increased their score. 42% of them increased their performance level, moved from warning to needs improvement, needs improvement to proficient, proficient to advanced. That's a, that's a pretty solid number. If that's above 50, we're really cranking, and we're getting there every year. In the seventh grade, consistent with the state-level dip, it's also the intervention dip. It's not, there's no loss, but 61% of the students in seventh grade math lab students maintained and increased, and 31% of those kids increased their performance level. Interesting because then the eighth grade turns right back around. So the eighth grade numbers, 100% of all the students in the eighth grade math lab maintained and increased, 91% of them increased in performance level. We believe that's directly related to the practices of eighth grade, to the content rigor, to the support between the math lab teacher and the regular ed teacher, to the fact that we did skill drills only in eighth grade. So there's a lot of things where the stars hit right, but again, that's our exit grade. So 100% of the kids who took advantage of eighth grade intervention, all of them go on to the next level with maintaining and increased, and 91% of them just went up in performance level. That's, that's very impressive coming out of eighth grade. So the question begs, and we've talked a lot about this, can we reproduce that kind of an intervention program in ELA? So that's the hard work we're going to do at the school level that comes with staffing changes and programmatic changes. But can we build a mirror, a literacy lab program, very similar to our math lab program, and support the other side of this coin? And that's, that's going to take an entire year to have that conversation at multiple levels. That's, that's an ultimate goal. I've done it in other locations in my career, and it's worked well, and we addressed the math issue well, and I'd like to continue to support the ELA side of this coin, too. We're also working towards meeting our school improvement goals. We have a brand-new ELA improvement goal that's been updated recently. And so that goal is specific to developing a unified approach to teaching and assessing the student's abilities to meet the language arts standards. Originally, we were just talking about spelling and vocab two years ago and even last year, but when I met with the team, they really want to, they want to attack the entire thing and talk about teaching and assessing their ability to meet the language standards and the Common Core Anchor standards. They think that if we can really get all three grade levels fine tuned in this direction, that could be an impactful change as well, not just on proficiency level, but just on the overall rigor for our kids who are in advanced and proficient categories. That's it.
Yeah, look at me. I had a couple of things.
Yeah.
No, Mike over the top.
We're good, we're good.
No, I had circled a couple of things in my notes, but you covered them in your explanation on some of the dips and everything. I'm very satisfied with the approach you're taking to not only analysis, but addressing any of the concerns that they might be identifying. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll just throw that the, you talk about middle school, the age and all that's going on in their lives. And I think some of that can be, some of the improvements for the eighth graders, I think this eighth grade class has matured.
Yeah.
Certainly from sixth grade.
Yeah.
And from seventh to eighth, just from the circle that my eighth grader happens to be.
I mean, I'll tell you that anecdotally, what happens every year, even from a behavioral standpoint, is the eighth grade teachers will say, you know, two, three months in, they say, geez, this can't be the same class that we heard about.
Right.
That happens almost every year over 20 years of my career. Kids mature, kids grow up, kids go through a tough spot. And all of that impacts academics.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we don't push, but we have to know that.
Right. I think some of that lies in there as well. I commend you for adapting and making changes, including special ed in your meetings and working more efficiently and more productively. But now these folks aren't having to go to, as you said, several different meetings and it's, everything's in context. All the right people in the right place, having these conversations, not rehashing the conversations. You're going to get, with more minds, you're going to get more input and some good thoughts from each of them. So I commend you on that. And that as well as the Google Docs for tracking. It's a great tool, great resource, and it's using technology to your advantage. It's, it's great, like I've said before. Thank the teachers. Keep plugging.
Cool.
Appreciate it.
I think that what we're seeing is, and you hit on it, Dr. Brinkley, you know, we've made a commitment as a team and a school committee to put some programming and staffing in place. And you've had the luxury, I believe, of having that for a while now and we're seeing the positive impact. And I hope that it's a predictor of when we settle in the programs at Russell Street, we should see the same impact. So the commitment's there, the implementation is obviously there. And even when you see a cohort issue like you cited, you know, knowing that the programs and the interventions are in place and now it's just a matter of taking advantage of them is a lot better than saying, oh, you know, what do we do now? You know, we're going to fire her, we're going to go put it out. It's like, no, no, we're all set. We're going to start. And it'll take time and you might even see the result as they come out of middle school. You said this earlier, it'll help as they get into the high school. So I think we've done a good job in that building. I think we see that and it's very positive and very, you know, good for us to see that and understand that some of the decisions we made that we were asked to make are paying off.
Thank you.
It's important to remember that our middle school is really unique in our district in terms of how it's staffed. We have one teacher responsible for an entire subject in that grade, which creates some interesting scenarios. There's a lot of pressure on that, first of all. And when we look at hiring, I mean, we, we all know that there's a continuum and we continue to grow. When it comes to the middle school, that continuum narrows because of the fact we have one teacher teaching all of those subjects. So taking that into account and looking at the staffing changes that we've had over a four-year period, your progress is moving forward and that's not an easy task to do when you've had the changes that you have on staff. I mean, inculcating them into a culture and inculcating them into the expectations we have in terms of child development and curriculum, I mean, that's no easy task. So thank you for your leadership and also thank your staff for a tremendous job that they do.
Thank you.
Yes. Set to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I want to join you in thanking our colleagues and teachers at the Russell Street School and the middle school. Because tonight I have excellent results to report to you at the high school level and it's no doubt partly a tribute to the excellent work that's done prior to the arrival of the students at the high school. I just want, does this work? Okay. So in terms of the results, grade 11, oh, grade 10, sorry, ELA, 69% of our students scored advanced since the spring, 30% were proficient, only 1% needs improvement. And, you know, really exciting number that we saw was 86% of our students scored advanced in mathematics. That's a great leap for us and, you know, again, a tribute to all the students, high performance, their, their hard work and also a talented staff. And grades nine and 10, because we have a couple of kids who take a chemistry test who transferred in, 61% of our students scored advanced, 35% proficient, and 4% needs improvement. These are outstanding results, not only just locally, but in comparison across the state. And we also had the privilege of being named, as you already know, a commendation school this year. We're a level one school, we've continued that status throughout the years, but I think it's like the third time in the last six years we've been named a commendation school and that's really exciting for us. 99% again, students proficient and/or advanced in ELA, 98% of our students proficient and/or advanced in math, and 96% of our students proficient and/or advanced in science. And it's worth noting, the SGP factor that we've talked so much about, student growth percentile. Math department has continued to perform at a high level over the last five years and continued to demonstrate high growth, high student growth percentile. And ELA has, you know, continued to the last two years at a high level. Prior to that, some moderate growth, but for the last, last two years, again, 66, 62 excellent results in student growth percentile. So overall, we saw high achievement, high growth and progress and I can't be more thrilled than to report that to you tonight. And it's, just to note, again, the math department, advanced performance increased from 70, the advanced category, we, we advanced or increased from 70% to 86%. And ELA, again, with 99% of their students scoring advanced or proficient, 69% of those students were in the advanced category. And in the science category, advanced performance increased from 55% to 61%. So excellent results. I'll just turn the page here, a slide to cohort results that we've already reported. And as already demonstrated, we show consistent growth. And again, it's a tribute to the, you know, the continuum, the pre-K to 12 perspective that we have. We see that developmental sequence that we've told, every principal tonight has talked about the maturity of students and how important is to back that into the results. And we certainly see that growth maturity continue and demonstrated in the results for ELA here with our students. Again, you can see the graph speaks for itself. More and more students scoring proficient and advanced, very few in the needs improvement category. Okay. And I'll go to the math. You'll see that once again, the cohort results. And these, we did something a little bit different this year where we're highlighting, we made sure to base the data on students who took the tests, who took every test. And so the group is a little bit smaller when we look at the overall, you know, you'll see a little difference in the, in the number of students who are indicated here. But it's all due to the fact that they took, this is a much more reliable and accurate presentation that you're seeing tonight in terms of the graphs. I know that a lot of you like the visual aspect of it as well. And I'll just turn. This is the older graph that Mark pointed out. We're still holding on to the old graph for science. And these are the biology results for 2014. If you look at our, you know, if we include the other students, there's a little slight bump in the advanced and proficient results, like 55% of our students scored advanced, 36% proficient. Really excellent, excellent results and I'm really thrilled to tell you that. And then just going to next steps, we have, we've developed some routines and procedures that have worked well and we're going to keep doing them. We're going to make a slight, we're always looking at, well, how can we tweak and make adjustments if we need to or is there any area that requires special attention? And as we look, as we learn more and more about student growth percentiles, one area we want to look at is students in all the categories, not just the, we, last year we did a presentation at the, of looking at the SGP's for students who scored in the advanced category. This year at all school, at all, at all the schools, we looked at the SGP's for students who scored in the proficient category and students who scored in the needs improvement category. And we're quite fortunate not to have a lot of students to look at in the needs improvement category or even the failing warning category. But in the proficient category, we did notice that some students scored low or very low growth and mostly, and we want to take a look at that. It's a small number because of the number of participants we have in the test, but we want to see what was it about the, that didn't, what was it about those students that led to them scoring or demonstrating low growth? We're going to look at that so we can, it requires intervention, we can intercept now and make those adjustments during the course of the year. The other thing that we have, unique to the high school, is we have educational proficiency plans. Anytime we have a student score in the needs improvement category in ELA or mathematics, we're required per the state to develop an educational proficiency plan to allow those students another opportunity to take the test, to demonstrate proficiency by the time they graduate if they score needs improvement. And we're fortunate not to have a lot of students to have to try to raise the level of proficiency like some other neighboring schools, but we do develop these educational proficiency plans and we want to make sure that we're documenting that well and sharing that with our colleagues in Google Drive, not just keeping it in administrative file. So that's one of the things that we're going to be doing a little bit different this year. And of course, we continue to learn more about Edwin Analytics and advance our knowledge of that. We, as I've always said, every year, we make instructional adjustments. That's part, parcel, it's part of the philosophy throughout the district and we always try to have a proactive approach. And in particular, this year, we want to be looking at students who we, we get a feeling that, you know, the, we look at the results for eighth grade, they scored in the warning category or they didn't do so well on a ninth grade science test, there was a few kids there. What can we do to intervene, help them score better in 10th grade or just help them be more successful throughout high school? So we'll continue to do that. And the buzz phrase that we're, or the term that we always use, early intervention. It's usually applied to pre-K or first grade, early intervention, even, you know, grade three. We do early intervention too, as much as we can, to make sure that the students are well-prepared and ready for college, career and citizenship as we talk about it each and every meeting. So again, I'm a proud principal tonight and happy to present these results to you. And I thank the school committee for their support of our staffing needs, our supply needs. We've had to make some textbook adjustments over the years and we're continuing to do that. For example, we're, next year, we're going to, we talk, well, soon as we prepare for the budget, we'll be talking about a new textbook series for algebra and Steve and superintendent and I will be talking about that. But we appreciate your support of the budget and of our staff, you know, and it certainly is a great contributor to these results. That about does it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, as I'm sitting here, I was trying to figure out how I exactly want to say this that it doesn't come out wrong.
That's right.
I really applaud you for the work that you've been doing with the, here. These results are tremendous. And at the same time, I don't view MCAS, particularly at the high school level, the end of your job. That's only 10th grade.
That's right.
You have two more years that we're really looking for, you know, my general expectation is, is they should be able to successfully complete this test as an exit criteria, but it's only a 10th grade. You still have two more years of work that I'm looking for.
Right.
Here. So at the same, at one time, I really like the work that's happened here, but it's only halfway through their high school career.
That's right.
And, you know, looking forward towards the discussion about what we're doing as we assess beyond the MCAS 10th grade level here on it. But I mean, like I said, excellent work.
Thank you.
Across the whole district because it's a culmination of the, of all the instruction at this point.
Absolutely.
It's great news and I think you hit on it, and I think it's interesting to note that like the high school presentation is shorter than all the rest of them, partly because it's just, you know, the one grade really and it kind of does, it's a finish line to cross, not the last finish line to cross. But I think that what we glean from tonight is, is that the work we do at the, at Russell Street in the middle school preps that and you can see how beneficial it is because it's not just that they're passing, but to see the rise is impressive. Now, I know this is one grade, that's fine. We'll see how that trends over time, but it is impressive and I think it does, you know, it shows a great reflection on what's going on in the, in the other buildings as they come up through the ranks. And to your point, Darryl, I mean, you're absolutely right. What I like to think is that by virtue of being that proficient and doing that well on the test, rather than worrying about student growth percentages and interventions, now those kids are more than ready to challenge themselves. We've given them the curriculum and the opportunities to challenge themselves in 11th and 12th grade. And we've seen, we've had anecdotal stories, maybe we don't break it down on a database the same way, because it might not lend itself to that kind of thing, although I think it, I'm sure you, you know, when you see the opportunity, you'll take advantage of it. But just the anecdotal evidence is, you know, the number of kids taking AP classes, the SAT results, the number of kids that go on to higher level education and the types of higher level education that they go on to, you know, I think that even though you're right, the MCAS is a measure, I think we've talked about, I think you can see we have reservations about how, I think we strike a good balance in our district about how much we put, importance we put on it. But I think that we can't argue the fact that it allows those kids to be confident they go on to do other stuff and that we give them that opportunity over those last two years. So I think we've got a good, a good pattern going through the district and it's impressive and it's a nice night to think about that.
I think the, the middle school and the Russell Street School principal can be proud of these results because it's part of that whole developmental sequence that we're all trying to contribute to. We sort of gauge ourselves, not only, of course, this is just one measure, we look at the results or the feedback we get from our graduates. That's really important to us. How do, when they arrive in college or whatever they're doing in the workforce, do they feel prepared? Are they prepared or better prepared than others? I know you've heard me say that at other presentations, but that's something we really, it's really important to us. It's, you know, not just, kids are going to forget their MCAS scores, but they're going to know whether they were prepared for post-secondary education and they're going to look to their high school either to, you know, for either praise or for whatever.
I do have one more question for Dr. Javie. You tried Darryl, I'd have to make a.
Thank you.
My question is, is are we finding that it's, are we better and quicker and is it easier now to do the analysis and, you know, to, you know, do we have the tools in place now because we were developing over time so that as you go through these analyses and then you start to use, you know, to be able to draw conclusions and apply strategies? Are we getting better at it now because we're five, six, seven, eight years into using these, these types of tools?
Yeah. Hi.
And I guess the other question is, are we more comfortable in the sense that we don't have to build new tools every year? Now, you, you hit on it, we are relying on some of the stuff that we've, we've done that we know works. So now it's not reinventing every year and trying to put another tool in the tool belt. Let's just go get the ones we know to use and use.
We're solidifying the protocols. It's not the first time, you know, there's like, for example, even the way that we set up the slides on what is being done, you know, I have at the top, all departments do this, all grade levels do this. So there is a shared understanding and it's like with the kids actually taking the MCAS, the teachers, the faculty teams are looking at it, have a shared understanding of the types of questions that they ask, the types of, what the reports themselves say and how to use the different reports for different purposes. And like you all like those new slides that we incorporated from Edwin, also the state platform helps us in terms of not having to do as many pen and pencil analyses ourselves. So it's, there's more, there's greater efficiency with that. But it, it really is shared understanding of very, very similar protocols in terms of analysis of individual to subgroup to aggregate and then the type of analysis you do with the item analysis for curricular and assessment purposes.
I just share one thing. It really is becoming an LPS way of looking at data.
Yes.
And that's, that's so important as an institution where, you know, as we look, as players shift and change, we want a new person coming in to learn our approach to how we look at results.
I think the, excuse me, the biggest difference that we've seen is we've institutionalized data expectations in terms of analysis. We do things quite differently than even if we could look back two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a standardized process. People understand it. More importantly, they understand the benefit of it. They didn't understand the benefit of it before. I think we were able to make that transfer and then we're at a good spot to continue to move forward.
Thank you. This will be up on the website. There's the whole analysis and there's a slide here showing it, you know, for more information to go get for parents. I know there are a lot of parents that are interested and that's great. So there's, if you can't, I mean, if you see it here, fine, have him, there you go. Yeah. If you see it here, fine, it's a little tricky to read on television, but it will Yeah, if you see it here, fine. It's a little tricky to read on television, but it will be on the website. And feel free to go in and drive around and dig your own, your own analysis and, you know. If you have questions, you can always reach out to the principals and the administration and they'll answer them as best they can. Thank you.
It's a big presentation. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. Done with that. Old business, high school intersection, discussion of the proposed plan. Do you want to lead us into discussion or?
Sure. So we had a meeting with Barry Lorien. We had a conference call with Barry Lorien from the Department of Transportation. Mike, Chairman Fontanella was there, the superintendent was there, I was there. We again expressed our concerns with the intersection. What they came up with and what they're proposing and it's on the screen, it's in your packet. They're proposing what they call pedestrian warning flashing beacons. The, their closest I can tell you is if you have been to Kimball's recently, you'll see a set of those flashing beacons out in front of the Kimball's at the crosswalks. So the Department of Transportation is proposing that they put in a set of those flashing beacons, lights, for the pedestrian crossing. So it is a push button system. So somebody who needs to cross 110 King Street can push that button, those lights flash brightly to warn approaching drivers of somebody in the crosswalk. And we're waiting on the final proposal from DOT with a proposed installation timeframe. And that's where we stand at this point in time.
So I looked at this. I think we have a little bit of a disconnect. I think the problem is, is that they're looking strictly at the driveway and the pedestrian walk. And I think, and it's probably some of it is our fault maybe, but, but that's okay. Because I think we're gonna be okay. Or at least we can try for, for what I think is a more optimal solution. Obviously, the optimal solution was a traffic like that can't happen. It's not gonna happen. So we'll let go of that. But that, I would, I would say we need these and I think we should take these and, and, you know, have them, put them in and I think that's great. I would like to see if we can make another push at them, and I'm happy to, you know, continue to kind of carry this one. To ask them, can we do something vis a vis signage on, you know, X number of yards on each side of the intersection? So that we can get drivers conditioned to understand where they're coming to and they will respect that area a little bit better. The, the one that I'm looking for is there is a new sign in air going towards the pond there. And as you drive up to it, it shows you the speed limit and it shows you how fast you're going. And it starts flashing if you're over what they consider, so if it's 35 and you're at 38, it's just gonna tell you. But if you're at 42, it's blinking while it's telling you, you slow down. I mean, I do. Not that I'm going that far, but anyway. I would like to see if we can get the state to take one, one more look at, can we just change the signage, get a little more aggressive with the signage down each side of the street? And see if they have a response to that. Because it's in there, they, they're using it, you know, down the road. I don't know, I don't know if that's an air thing because I don't know if that's a state road. But we can check. I'd like to, I'd like to respond back to this.
110 is a state road all the way.
It's not 1110 though. It's on, it's on the backside of Kimball Road in the street. Is it Groton Road? Yeah. So, but, but even so, we might be able to.
Even just announcing, you know, what do we got, this little eight and a half by 11 sign that says school 500 feet ahead. I mean, that sign's not sufficient to let people know that there's a school entrance.
So I have no problem with them, you know, with, I think this is good to what it addresses, which is the crosswalk and the intersection. But I think that maybe we need to just change what we're asking for and get them to look at it as a little more broader piece of real estate. And hopefully they'll be amenable to that. And I'd like to counter back at them, say thank you. In addition, could we see if we can get this as well and see what they say.
Yeah, so let me.
We specifically asked that type of question, have we yet?
Not specifically. So let me draft up a response and I'll bounce it off of the committee before we send it and then we can go from there.
All right.
One other thing, we touched on it in the safety meeting the other day, you know, is, would it be useful also to make, sort of a more formal request to the Light and Water Board about that power pole that's right on the corner blocking that's, when you take the left out, there's a power pole right in the line of sight there.
As well as the hedge.
Well, the hedge is a private property issue that we gotta probably see a different way of dealing with there. But the power pole, you know, if they, if they could set it back like 10 feet, it would at least take that out of the sightline there. But I'm not sure what the issues are.
And we could add to be a separate effort, but we can start it and just say.
Again, so on behalf of the committee, if the committee wishes, I'll draft up a, a request letter to the board.
Yeah. You know, I think rather than just, you know, just Steve reaching out to the director of Light and Water, make it more of a formal request to the board.
Let's do it that way. And then they might very well come back and say, here's why we can't do it now. We know and we can put that one to bed. But yeah, let's do it like that.
Okay. And, and we did get, I think I've reported to the committee, we did get written permission from the property owners on the corner to have the highway department keep those bushes trimmed back. So I would expect at some point down the highway, we'll get in and do that.
Well, then that's a good point then. You can put that on, whether it's your list or Bill Maher's list or whoever. If they could just periodically check that and just reach out to our friends down there. And, you know, different times of the year, it might be more relevant, but we've just got to remind them, hey, you know.
Yeah, right now it's not such a big deal because the leaves are off, but.
Bill's own out of the driveway every day, so.
Yep.
If he just notices, he's a guy.
Yep. No problem.
Excellent. Yeah, I would, I would say that I'd even, if it's a matter of this or that, I'd forego the crosswalk looking signs for what you're talking, the school zone signs. I, I would hope that, yeah, I would hope that we don't have to, I would hope we get it all, get it all. That would be awesome. But you're right. I, I see your point that. You're on top of it at that point. Exactly. At that point, it's almost irrelevant. And we have Millie there most of the time when most of the crossing is going on. So it really isn't gonna get us a whole lot, other than when a kid is literally in the crosswalk. Versus the solution that we're talking about might be slowing people down before they even get there and then, you know.
There's a, there's a school zone sign at the top of the bridge coming over Russell Street with 195, you know, up another 21 hours.
I'll draft up some responses and send them to the committee for their.
Excellent. Any other old business?
Should be good.
All right. Superintendent's report.
In your package, I've enclosed the state 2013-14 educator evaluator ratings, a few pages that you were able to cruise. I'll make this fast unless you have any questions. When you look at our data, it pretty well mirrors the state data in terms of categories of where teachers were placed. Administrators are not showing on there because we have less than six. And if the ratings, if you have more than six and the ratings are the same, it's not recorded. Or if you have one different rating, it's not recorded. So they've all been done, but it is not on there. Happy to report to you that all the administrators are rated at least proficient. And very, very pleased with the leadership that they're providing in our schools.
And this is the first year for this, this data, correct?
Right.
So it's sort of a baseline jumping off and we'll see how it trends over time.
And what's interesting to note is we're only required to do half of our staff. And this really, I guess, tells more about our demographics. You can see from the data that we looked at.
Seventy-eight percent.
Yeah, seventy-eight percent. We evaluate the seventy-eight percent of our staff. Which is indicative of some of the turnover we've had in the last three years. Because remember, non-PTS teachers need to be evaluated every year. So that increased that percentage. Next item. Shaker Lane Playground. Steve has been working with Shaker Lane Principal, Principal Farity on this. There's a kind of a diagram that's in the package. Capital replacement, or capital plan allocated around $30,000 for it. Steve was able to write a grant for another 10 and, which was nice, nice perk. And that's what you get for $40,000 in this data.
Well, that includes the installation costs as well.
And grading of the underneath.
Right.
It's not just the, it's not just the.
Right. And then we're working with the highway department to remove the old structure that's there. They'll, they'll do that with their equipment. And the installation is scheduled for April 2015. It's too late in the year to do it now. So April is the best time. That allows us to pull the, all the equipment out and get it installed when students aren't in school.
April vacation?
April vacation.
It's pretty swampy over there.
Yep.
Okay.
Last item under superintendent's report, just another copy of the 2015 capital request items. What's different from the last one that you received is that we were able to meet with PMBC, some representatives of PMBC, and talk about the items that they were going to take over and propose in their plan. Steve and I had a follow-up discussion to that and, and we talked about this before at the school committee level. Would be our desire, if we could, to wait to prioritize these items till we have a dollar amount. This makes more sense.
Like an overall dollar amount.
Right. And then we can sit down and create a draft priority list.
Okay. Which is fine, although at the budget summit that I was at on a Saturday, one of the things they did ask for was, you know, how are we doing on prioritizing the list? And I told them that we would, you know, be done soon because they would like to see it. So let's, I'll put, I'll go back to the FinCom chair and just say, hey, you know, we, we are waiting for this. You know, what do you guys think and see? And then we'll, we'll do that, we'll do the prioritization. That's perfectly reasonable point of view. I don't have a problem with that.
To me, I don't, I don't look at, I don't look at this process as, as any different from if you were building a house yourself. You need to know what the cost is. And then you decide whether you're gonna put one or two fireplaces in or whatever, one or two decks.
Special time.
Et cetera, special times.
Is anybody having comments on that?
So question, would, process question, I guess. Would school committee like the school administration to prioritize and then present that list to school committee to then review?
When you address the number, I think, I think that's the right way to do it. Is to, you guys to take the pass at it and, and give us a presentation on, you know, what your thought process was and, and, you know, the criteria that you used. And then if any of us feel like we're gonna differ from that, well, we'll know why. And we'll talk about it.
Okay.
All right. Okay. But I think the most important thing is, is that let's go get the number and we'll push back on them to get the number. And then we'll go down the road with that.
Yeah. And the information you had in the packet listed, I think there were three or four projects that we had on our initial list that PMBC will include on their list. So that's the only difference.
All right. Anything else on the superintendent's report?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Interested citizens? She left. All right. Subcommittee reports, PMBC. The only thing to report here is, I don't think we've announced this in open meetings, is that Mike Mizoney has become our rep on the PMBC. He went and got sworn in. He's good to go. He went to one meeting, has a non-s sworn-in member. Now he's all set to go.
We did appoint him, you know, in session.
Right. And then he went down and had to go to the town clerk because that is a board he has to swear in on. And he did that. So we're, we are now represented by Mike Mizoney. Thank you, Mike. That's a big commitment. Budget Subcommittee. All right. So I went to the budget summit on Saturday and talked about these numbers. They did not get a document, I wanted to go over this first, and with us. And we're going to do that. And then we'll talk about next steps. So what we see here is the FY 2015 appropriated budget was $16.7 million. As we all remember, we also budgeted spending of circuit breaker, $750,000. And school choice, $250,000. Those were the budgeted amounts for a total budget of $17.7 million. The thing to keep in mind about circuit breaker is we kind of changed our way of using it in the sense that we have to spend down every year. We actually have more than $750,000. We knew we were gonna have more than $750,000. But rather than budget it all, we held some back in case we needed to use it. Indeed, we are going to need to use it. We are in the midst of using it. So the total expenditure in circuit breaker is gonna be more like $820,000 when all is said and done, which is the number that we have to spend. There is also a little bit of additional school choice that's gonna be spent. And we'll talk about that more later. But the point is, is that this is what we budgeted. As always, we had some changes as the year has unwound on us, but we're able to meet them. But going forward, what we are projecting is over, not over, but increases for next year for FY 2016. We're looking at salary increases of $550,000, which is all our steps and lanes and our budgeted negotiating increase. Sped increases of $403,000. Some of that is, again, increased spending from, for FY 2015 that we had not initially budgeted for. We've had some kids moving to the district that we now need to meet services for. We're gonna meet that out of the circuit breaker. That's not a problem, but it needs to go on to the operating budget as we move forward. We also have some increases in case fees and we're still massaging through the, the change in the way case does their billing because they no longer bill in arrears. We do have some students aging out. So in reality, even though that is a large number, $403,000, it's more than we were hoping for. It, it could have been more, but we do have some students aging out of the district. So we'll, we'll have reductions on those kids. They'll get pushed back onto other services that we're providing. But the overall increase is $403,000. Then, talking with the superintendent and he's working with his leadership team, they are looking for some additional staffing at about $100,000. We are very close, if not technically over, the contract ratio, teacher to student ratio at the high school particularly. We're still working on that with the LEA. But we also feel that we need more staff at Russell Street. We, you know, had the presentation and Mr. Mizel was talking about his challenges. And that was a building that we did make some cuts a couple of years ago. And I think we always talked about that we were always realized that we can't live at the staffing level that we were at. We were doing the best we can. We're gonna have to add back. So now we feel this is the year to think, seriously think about adding back specifically at the high school in Russell Street. $50,000 for additional curriculum materials. This is specifically for reading and writing materials K through five as we continue to, you know, implement programs and work towards increasing our achievement. We need some, and this would be sort of a books and software type of thing that we need to add in there to take advantage of the programs that we have. The third item there in additional spending is chapter 222, $30,000. Chapter 222 is the requirement, alternative education for students that are not in our buildings. Sometimes it's disciplinary, but not always. Usually, because we're taking advantage of emerging technology, they need some infrastructure improvements in order to be able to do that job the way we think we need to do it. I mean, just because a child leaves the building, we're still responsible for education. It doesn't mean they become a second-class citizen in that regard. And we just feel like we need to beef up how we can go about doing that. So the total increase that is added up there is $1.1 million, which is about a 6.8% increase over last year. So what we're going to do is, in terms of next steps, we're going to meet with the, our two FinCom reps to go over this with them. We will forward this information out formally to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the town side. We'll also work to break out by cost centers where these increases, building by building or cost center by cost center, where they're going. I would like to see us be able to present that. We have one more meeting in December. And then we kind of get a little break over the holidays. I'd like to come back on January 8th with a more detailed analysis of where these monies, which cost centers they're hitting. And maybe an analysis of, you know, we can start to think about things which we haven't done yet. Thinking about, do we need to reallocate resources between grades or buildings? You know, where do the, where does the impact on FTEs as we, you know, work through our staff and stuff? So we're gonna, you know, break that out in more detail as we get towards the spring presentation. The other thing that we need to do is, that's a large number, $1.1 million is, is, at 6.8% is more than we've done in the last few years. We need to start working with the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. They have gone through their budget summit, so they have an idea now on the town side, the other departments, what they're looking at for increases. And we all need to think about strategizing, you know, where are we going, how are we gonna be able to fund that between appropriation, state aid, local aid, our revolving funds, other things that we, other funding methodologies that we have in on the town side. And we'll start to work towards, you know, how we can sustain this increase and balance it out with the requirements on the town side. That will be a, you know, well beyond January 8th type of discussion. It'll go right up to town meeting as it has the last several years. But that's what we'll be working for. And that is it for that part of it and what the next steps are. Questions or comments?
Just to comment, I mean, the, you know, we finished the salary negotiations last year, the Board of Selectmen. We briefed them on the thing there. They were all on board on what we were doing there. The sped increases are, the sped increases on it. I think, you know, making sure that we're prepared for the discussion on the additional staffing in chapter 222. And Chapter 222 is, you know, law, you know, there's some expenses here that ties into the comprehensive review and our staffing tightness there. I think we ought to probably make sure we have a good crisp lineage and traceability of where these are coming from because these are not necessarily gratuitous, you know, oh, good, we're going to just add a new program here. I think these are minimums to require just to keep the basis of service that we're trying to maintain for our students. And I think it'll be up to us to make sure we're very crisp in, in laying out that story for, for the other boards and the town.
The other thing to keep in mind is, is that we've talked about this at Budget Subcommittee, is we know that the Omni project is coming online and there is going to be some increase in our student population. There's all kinds of numbers being bandied about, some of them being spoken out on the town meeting floor by some citizens. I don't think that the numbers there were very accurate, but it's irrelevant and we know it's going to go up. We've cut staff a few years ago, we've been hanging in there, but we're going to need to add more staff to meet the increased student population. So I don't think we're going to see an increase this year, but it might be, we might see some, but it'll be the year after that that we're going to see more. So we can either start to add staff now gradually and try to be proactive about it, or we can do it all at one big thump and it's going to hurt a lot more. So you're right, Daryl, some of this is just meeting what's right here, right now, today. We need to do this, we feel strongly about it. I think you're right, the messaging will become important and showing exactly where it is and why we need it. But then also to think about, you know, this is going to be a trend for a couple of years. The only question is, how much do we need to add based on how many students, you know, we're in the business.
The other part of that, you know, is, you know, as the Omni project comes on board and the students come in, in district, if we, if we don't add staff, it'll take away our school choice slots there, which will further squeeze the budget situation there. You know, so there's a balance. I think that, you know, we got to make sure we're on a happy medium with the Board of Selectmen, particularly you mentioned the FTE counts and the other pieces there, that, you know, there might be more, more economics involved than just straight head count.
Correct.
In order to figure out how we want to forward project our ability to bring revenue in through school choice.
A good point. And when we look at resources, I mean, that's, that's one thing that we are, we've tried to deal with when we've been downsizing for the past six, seven years in this district. And realistically, every, every grade, we have about 42 different classes. It's a lot of, a lot of materials for, for a district. And we've done a good job of, of holding the line. In fact, our budgets are minimal in those areas. The last time we had a significant injection was back with the stimulus fund. It was back in 2009, wasn't it? Yeah, somewhere around there. So, you know, these are areas that have been building as time has gone on and, you know, we're, I think we're really conservative with the number that we put down, but we had to be because of the other demands that are rising in our district.
All right, so we'll continue to move forward with that and, you know, that'll start to take up more and more of our business as we get into, past the holidays and into the spring. As always, we'll go for there.
Okay. All right, Policy Subcommittee.
So this will be the second reading of the, the batch of D policies here.
Can I have your for a second?
Sure.
You can leave that bag sitting right there?
I just tested it. Take a handful.
No, I'm good.
You want one piece?
He wants a handful. These are the D policies fiscal management. As I mentioned last week, there was, most of them don't have any significant changes. We're actually rescinding a bunch of them where we're not actually providing any additional guidance on what's required by the law there. So that will help us simplify just the tracking of the different pieces there. One policy of note there, policy DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority. I specifically included language in that that allows the, formalizes our practice that allows the superintendent to do line item transfers within the appropriated budget. That doesn't require us to re-load it there, just because that's been our practice. I do request that he gives us regular updates relative to any of the things there, as well as an annual one for the, just balances out the books for us there. But that just formalizes the practice that's been in place over time and will remove any ambiguity of somebody saying, why is, how's the school committee operating relative to that part of the budget. And with that, if there's no questions, I'd appreciate the three motions.
Motion, motion to accept a second reading to review the following policies with no changes, DA, DB, DI.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept a second reading of revisions to the following policies, DBJ, DGA, DIE, DKC.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept a second reading to rescind the following policies, DBC, DBD, DBG, DD, DH, DJA, DJA-R, DJAA, DJB, DJE, DJEE, DJG, and DO.
Second. Excellent job.
Motion is made in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you, Daryl.
Daryl? Any other business? Well, we're back in two weeks. Enjoy Thanksgiving. We have a football game on Saturday, JV football game on Monday, Thanksgiving Day game versus air on the road, 10:00 AM kickoff over here, the 110 Bowl, right, 110 Bowl? The Rotary Breakfast at the Middle School, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Thanksgiving morning. Always a good get.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, 7:00 AM to 10:00.
6:30.
6:30 AM to 10:00 AM, okay. So if you get there early and get out of there about 9:30, plenty of time to get over to the football game and go from there. All right? Anything else? All right, thank you, everybody. I'll take a, we don't need to, well, we're not going to have any additional.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everybody.